Oh, really?
We have about one thing first place.
Have you been there for fourteen games?
Mm-hmm. No one comes to see me anymore. My office is very, very quiet.
It's a big week, right?
No one comes to see me. No one talks football.
I want to.
Hey, Brusco. Not, yeah, not, yeah, I did turn to watch him.
Wasn't my turn to watch him.
String on.
David's turn. Your chair looks low, Mr. Mayor.
Hmm?
Your chair looks low.
It's not low.
You look low. There you go.
I've gained stature.
Now you look like you got command.
How are we? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock. And as mayor, I hereby call to order the meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for September twenty-four, two thousand eighteen, at this hour. As always, we will begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Mark Haynes in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with love.
Thank you. For the record, I will note that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney.
Here.
Counselor Bowens.
Counselor Bowens is absent this evening.
Counsel Whitman.
Here.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Present.
Counselor Hosmer.
Counselor Hosmer is absent this evening.
Mayor Engler.
Mayor Engler is present this evening. Thank you. Let the record show that four of the six counselors are present at tonight's meeting, and therefore, a quorum for this meeting has been established. I will also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers, and I would recognize him at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was very sad and shocking news that we all received last Wednesday morning with the sudden and unexpected passing of Donna Woodham, our finance director. Donna served in that position as finance director for over seven years, right around seven years now. Was with the city over ten years. She was a friend and a colleague to many in this building and across the city. A very dedicated employee, a mentor to many. Took her job seriously but had fun at the same time. So certainly, she'll be missed personally and professionally. Our condolences with her husband, David, her children, Stephen and Taylor, and obviously immediate family and friends. So it's been a challenging week here in City Hall.
Thank you for those words. Appreciate it. Okay. Give us a second here if you would. I think this is a a difficult time for all of us. Turning to a much happier note, we have a council proclamation to read this evening. And for that, I'm going to come around to the front of the room and ask Counselor Haynes to join me, if he would. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I have a proclamation to read here tonight, and since the obvious color of the day is red and the obvious animal of the day is the wolf, I would like to read the following proclamation. Whereas the Eastern Hockey League has more than twenty years on the East Coast of the United States, the New England Wolves players come from many areas of the United States, as well as from Russia, Canada, and the United Kingdom. And whereas the young men comprising the New England Wolves hockey team are great ambassadors for their organization, as well as the city of Laconia. And whereas the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen season was truly special for the Wolves in the Lakes Region, with a new fundraiser and/or event planned almost every week, the players provided over one thousand hours of community service and volunteer work to organizations and events such as Prescott Farm, the New England Pond Hockey Classic, Pumpkin Festival, United Ways Days of Carrying, Laconia Christmas Village Cleanup, as well as volunteering with the Laconia Youth Hockey Program. And whereas, the Eastern Hockey League is an organization that thrives to build up every player to the best of their abilities on and off the ice. Focusing on making each player a better person because of their many hours of service and dedication, the league has announced that the New England Wolves have won the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen humanitarian award in recognition of their many hours of service and outstanding dedication to our community. And whereas, the Laconia City Council and the entire community congratulate all of the New England Wolves players, General Manager Andrew Trimble, Coach Tim Kunes, and the entire Wolves organization for an outstanding year and for being named the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Humanitarians of the Year, and express our sincere appreciation for their commitment and service to our community. Now therefore, I, Edward J. Engler, Mayor of the City of Laconia, do hereby proclaim Monday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, as New England Wolves Appreciation Day in the City of Laconia. Congratulations, fellows. Let me say on a personal note that, that making an organization such as the Wolves thrive in a community such of ours, as ours, is predicated upon a tremendous volunteer effort, not the least of which are the host families that house the players during the season, who come from all over. And we are fortunate enough tonight to have one of those host, the father of one of those host families, Counselor Haynes, with us tonight. Counselor, which one? Which one is your fellow here? There he is.
He's Sam Russell.
You're from Sam Russell?
He's from the UK.
UK, all right. Welcome, Sam.
And Nate Trumbull. Nate Trout.
Nate Trout.
Nate Trout.
And where is Nate from?
Somersworth.
Somersworth, all right. Welcome to both of you. And so, we have a direct connection, as far as the Laconia City Council is concerned, to the Wolves in terms of Counselor Haynes and his dedication to your organization and his love of all of you. So we have a very special connection there. So I'm going to turn things over to Counselor Haynes, and he's going to introduce the coaches. And then the coaches are going to introduce the captains of the Wolves teams.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. General Manager Andy Trimble, would you please come forward? Coach Kunes, Coach Bates?
Congratulations. Good to see you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations for everything you do. Appreciate it. So, one of you, if you would, introduce the captains, and we'll have them join us up here, if you would, please.
We have, on the E H L team, from Riga, Latvia, is the Assistant Captain, Daniel Zleya.
Latvia. Congratulations.
And we have from Pennsylvania, another assistant captain is Patrick Roach. And the team captain is D.J. Schwanki from Colorado.
And from our E H L P team, we have Jack Johansson from Milford, New Hampshire.
Is that it? That's the captain, so why don't we, let's go back into the U here, or we'll make it easier for anybody to grab it. So if you have a camera, you'd like a picture, come up.
Front here.
Yes. Everybody? Okay, thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.
Have a great season, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Did you tell them you have to stay for the rest of the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
To show your true community dedication, you have to stay for the rest of the meeting. That's all right. Thank you for joining us.
Mr. Mayor, wait a minute. Mr. Mayor? I'd like to say something on behalf of Christmas Village and Armin. For many years, you guys have helped us out at Christmas Village. And I want to let you know that we truly appreciate it. All your help over the years. And if Armin was here, he would say that. So, thank you. And we need to help this year, too.
All right. So, gentlemen, we're going to get to the official business of the meeting, so why don't we just take a quick minute break here? And you guys can excuse yourselves, and we thank you for coming. It's great to see all of you.
Thanks, guys.
No, no, no. No, no, no. Get any wild ideas.
I think we lost our audience. Thank you. That was, that was nice. Well done.
Good job.
That sort of straightens things out.
Okay. I have number seven minutes. We have before us tonight the minutes from our last meeting, which was September tenth. Those minutes were distributed by the clerk on September fourteenth. No corrections were submitted to her, and so unless there are any at this hour, I'm going to declare that the minutes to our meeting of September tenth, two thousand eighteen, are accepted as submitted by the clerk. We have no consent and action items tonight, so we're already on to citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate place on our agenda for anyone to come up and use the microphone which wishes to address the council about any matter that is not on tonight's agenda, not on tonight's agenda. Does anyone fit that criteria? Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's a hard act to follow. So my name is Mason Donovan. I am a independent running on the Democratic ticket for state senate, which includes the great city of Laconia. I'm here to just raise awareness of my run, and also, at the end, I would like to ask, as you can think about some of the issues you would want a senator to think about and concerns you would have if I should have the honor and privilege to represent you in Concord. I live in Bosquen, and I am a small business owner. I have a leadership development business that focuses on diversity and inclusion. We focus on creating an inclusive culture. I've written many books on it. And to that matter, Mayor, I would like to thank you for your recent comments on how important diversity and inclusion is to the city of Laconia, as well as to the state. I've been knocking on thousands of doors across the city of Laconia and going to events like the Fourth of July Parade, the Multicultural Fair, the Children's Business Forum, which has been, which was a lot of fun. And it's clear to see that there is a lot of opportunity in the city, as well as a lot of pride. And that was just exemplified right here in this room. It's also, there's a lot of challenges. I don't need to tell you that of the opioid crisis, Laconia is up there at the top for opioid deaths. Although, I also don't need to tell you that the, as the state has walked away from their partnership with their cities, with their, with partnering in the pensions and with the schools, that has left that burden on your shoulders. And you've done a fantastic job of keeping the tax rate low, but we all know that that can only go so far if the state keeps walking back. Going from a pension share of thirty-five percent to zero percent, which has cost your city hundreds of thousands of dollars from walking back their share of the school and what they used to partner with in the school budget. Those are, both of those items are top of my list. And some things that I believe that, one of the things that the state has not done so well in the past is that they have not consulted the, our select board members, our council members, and what is important to you. And also, as they are working on programs, whether it is the state school complex or any initiatives that might put a further burden onto your shoulders, they're not coming to the table and really fully engaging you on your, on your expertise and your knowledge of how that would impact you locally. So I have one favor I would like to ask of you, but before I do that, why, I do have a question I like to put out there is, if I do have the honor and privilege of being your state senate leader, then I would like to ask, what is on your shoulders that you have advice or guidance that you want your senator to bring down to Concord on behalf of the city of Laconia?
Anyone care to address that? It was a pop quiz here.
Thought you'd represent us, sir.
Counselor Hamel.
I think you hit on some of the things right off. What the state has been doing to the schools by reducing funding. They also stopped the funding for construction of new schools for quite a while, and now I guess they just give a token amount, and once that's gone, I mean, there's really not even enough money for a community to build a decent school, you know? And I think it's very important that the state continue looking at, like what we have here is the Hewitt Center Trade School. I think it's important that they keep those schools updated. They did pay, like eighty-five percent?
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent or something like that of the construction and equipment. But I think they need to, because it's already been five years or so, and we have advanced manufacturing course there, and if they don't keep the equipment updated, then when they move on, they're already behind the curve of what the real manufacturers are using. So I think it's important that the state keep active with those programs and continue to fund updating the equipment. You know, we did the brick and mortar, but now it's the insides, the equipment that need to be updated. So, just a couple of comments.
No, it's important. I used to be the investment associate for the state of Florida. I worked over in Europe, and my job was to bring companies to the state of Florida. I worked in Frankfurt, Germany, as well as to sell state businesses of this, of Floridian businesses over to their services and their products over there. I understand how important it is for education and to have a workforce that is ready. That is the first question I can tell you every single business has asked when they decide when they're going to invest in the state. Do you have a ready workforce for me to employ? And as a small business owner, working with other business owners, I can tell you one of their biggest pains right now is not taxes. Their biggest pain is that they can't find labor and qualified labor. So that's really important. Thank you. Anything else?
Counselor Whitman.
Our city manager had a article or editorial recently that discussed the rooms and meals tax share back with the communities. And if you haven't seen that piece, it'd be worth your while to look at in terms of, I think, a modest proposal to restore the percentage as long as the revenue's there, and so that'd be something. The other issue that came up last legislative session is, Laconia has a few other communities, but you know, being a tourist area with respect to what is seasonal housing or not considered to be permanent housing for purposes of property tax assessment, that the last two legislative sessions, Laconia's had to work hard to preserve not being unfairly cut out from being able to reasonably tax properties that are are permanent residents, if you will.
Sure.
And so that's something that, it's gone back and forth between the House and the Senate where our issue's been over the last few legislative sessions, but that's something we need our senator to be aware of.
You know, I've seen the state walk back from their, providing their share of revenue, even when the town has done a lot of the work itself. One case in point, as if, I know in the town of Webster and many towns, and I'm not sure if it's different for the city, but if the police of those towns pull somebody over for a speeding ordinance or any moving violation, they get zero of those funds. Those go all to the states from that, from that ticket. Even when, as a town, we're paying overtime for our police to go to court and fight those, so we bear all the expense. But we get zero of those monies. That used to be a share. It used to be a share with the state police and the local towns. That's gone. They've walked away, as they keep minusing that share, whether it's meals and rooms tax or anything else, that share's getting smaller and smaller, and walk away. And at the same time, we've given over a hundred million dollars away mostly to non-New Hampshire businesses. I can tell you, I own a multimillion dollar business. I am not going to leave New Hampshire because of our business enterprise tax or our business profit tax. The business profit tax is hitting mostly non-New Hampshire businesses. That's over a hundred million dollars we're giving away every budget. If you took all ten towns and cities in this, my district, District Seven, and we took all your core budget, we took your twenty-five million dollar budget, we took all the other core budgets for all those other cities and towns, we would still have money left over from that hundred million dollars. Wouldn't that be nice to kind of get a nice tax holiday? It's money that we need. It's not, it hasn't brought in a single large business. I've asked many towns across this district, name one, one large business has come into New Hampshire since two thousand ten, when they started bringing that down, that's came here because of the taxes. I can tell you many that have left. Two recently, Verico and Bosch, have left to go to Connecticut, Massachusetts. They're not going there because it's a tax favor for them. So there is, we really need to kind of step up, understand where we need to put that money at our town levels and our local levels, and bring back that share as well, and realize that, you know, we can't keep putting the burden on this property tax. So that can only go so far.
The one thing that I would add that has nothing specifically to do with any particular issue is that I think with each passing year, when we have discussions with our legislative delegation, I know that one member of our House delegation is here this evening, and I think he would, from conversations I've had with him, I think he would offer testimony to what I'm about to say. But I think it has become abundantly clear to us in recent years that a major issue, if not the major issue, that's not issue specific, is that when representatives and senators get elected from communities such as Laconia, and they get down to Concord, their loyalty is expected to be to their party, not to their community. And that it is not infrequent that they are called upon by party leadership to vote a certain way because it's the party way, the party's position on a given issue, and they are expected to go along with that party even if it hurts or causes harm in some way to their local community. And that probably is very much our fault, as well as it is their fault, from a standpoint of not staying more engaged on our end of things. But I think that's, I think that's an issue that we all need to pay more attention to and whatnot. That you get elected from your local community, and at some point in time, your loyalty needs to be more to your community than it is to your party.
I agree a hundred percent with that, Mayor, and it needs to be from day one. And it's why I started this off saying I'm an independent running on the Democratic ticket. I would take, I would move if we could all, when we became, there's only twenty-four senators. One, we can't afford to be divided on party lines. It's just, things don't get done. And it takes, as you said, they, it takes the spotlight and the, really the focus away from what's important. And those are our constituents and our towns that we represent. I would wholeheartedly, you know, move to, if we can get all senators, the moment, the day they took the oath off as we all became independents, and then we can work as one. I think the moment that you can remove the parties from both, there's no one single party has a monopoly of good ideas, right? And no one single person does as well. But when we can work together and we can take off those sort of, those what I would call party shackles, you can start focusing on what's important. And what's important is who we represent, not the ticket that we ran on. So, thank you for saying that. A hundred percent agree as well.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
So, one last favor. I said I was going to ask you one favor. And the favor is, is if I do have the honor and privilege of becoming your next senator, I hope you will allow me to come back here and lean upon you either in session or out of session when laws and legislation come, bills come up to devote. As I said, I can't be an expert in everything, but I love to rely on your expertise and other towns, and it's like birds, in our cities and towns, because that's what I need to be, have, is my information and really my guiding light. You're closer, you're going to be closer to the needs of the city than I am when I'm representing all ten towns and cities. So, my favor would be asked if I can come to you should I, should I get there to Concord.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish tonight to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Speaking of the representative.
I would just like to assure, thank you. I would just like to assure the last speaker that the city manager and his inside people down in the state house will keep him informed of what the city wishes are. Thank you.
Nice tie.
Anyone else? An issue that is on tonight's agenda. If not, we'll move on. We have no interviews tonight. We do have one item on the agenda, eleven A, under nominations, appointments, and elections, and that is, it's time of the year to start thinking about the annual Deborah B. N. R.'s Award. And we have a request on page fourteen of your packet tonight to appoint a city council member to the committee that selects the recipient of this annual award. And for many years, that person on this council was Counselor David Doyle. So, he's not with us, and so we need to, are you volunteering, sir?
No, I'd like to nominate Counsel Cheney.
Oh, well, that's, a second.
Since he's sitting in the seat, you know? And also...
And he obviously knew...
And he obviously knew Deb worked for me. She was working for me when she died.
Perfect.
So that's more than appropriate then if you would accept that.
I would.
Representative. All right. So, thank you. So do we need a, yes, all right. So Councilor Hamel moves to appoint Councilor Cheney as the city council's representative to the 2018 Deborah B. N. R.'s Award Committee, seconded by Councilor Lippman. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. We have a unanimous enthusiastic vote to appoint Councilor Cheney to that position. Thank you. And we thank Councilor, former Councilor Doyle for many years of dedication to that task as well. I remember her for that. Public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight that I think are going to go in quick order. The, I have a... Okay, the first one, make sure I got these in the right order. Thirty-one, yes. Okay, the first one is a public hearing for resolution 2018-31 relative to the DWI DUI grant in the amount of $13,694.51. It's being applied to by the police department. Notice that this particular public hearing was made in the September 13, 2018 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at the City Hall, the Community Center, the Public Library and the S.A.U. office. So I am going to declare this public hearing open at 7:30 PM and ask if there's anyone who wishes to address the council tonight on the potential acceptance of resolution number 31. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:31 PM. And note for the record that we will be voting on this tonight later for the second reading under unfinished business. Sorry, yes. All right, next up is the second of three, and that is a public hearing on resolution number 32 relative to authorizing city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $6,194.35 for distracted driving enforcement patrols. Notice that this hearing was also made in the September 13, 2018 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Community Center, the Public Library and the S.A.U. office. I'm going to open this hearing at 6:31 PM and ask if there's anyone who wishes to address the council tonight on the matter of the adoption of resolution number 32.
Seven thirty-one, sir.
I'm sorry?
Seven thirty-one. You said six thirty-one.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Open the hearing at seven thirty-one PM. All right, so I will close with no one volunteering to testify. I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-two PM and we'll move on to the last of these three resolutions. And that is resolution number 33 relative to authorizing city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $11,815.58 for sustained traffic enforcement patrols. Notice that this public hearing was made in September 13, 2018 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Community Center, the Public Library and the S.A.U. office. So I'll open this public hearing at seven thirty-two PM and ask if there is anyone who wishes to offer testimony tonight on the possible adoption of resolution number 33. Oh, there was movement there. That was suspicious. All right, we have no one coming forward, and so I will close this public hearing as well at seven thirty-three. And again, note for the record that we will take up all three of these resolutions on second reading tonight under unfinished business. And we are on to the mayor's report. And I will begin just very briefly by seconding, if you will, the remarks made by the city manager at the top of our meeting tonight and offering condolences to Donna Woodman's family on behalf of not only the council here tonight, but on behalf of each and every resident of the city of Laconia. We have heavy hearts tonight and have had for the last week or so. It's not possible, I don't think, to put into words the shock with which we met the news of the passing of Donna and all that she has meant to the city, the dedication, the expertise that she has brought to this table and to the City Hall over the last seven years is going to be difficult, if not impossible, to replace. And she holds a... I think it's no exaggeration to say that she holds a dear, dear place in all of our hearts. And we're going to, we're going to miss her. So our deepest condolences to her family and friends. The next thing I'd like to mention quickly is the the state school committee. I keep forgetting the official name, the Lake Shore Redevelopment.
Redevelopment Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. Held a public hearing in Laconia last week at which a couple of counselors that I noted were there. Councilor Hamel was there and Councilor Cheney was there. And a pretty decent turnout, I think, of local folks who attended and listened to the presentation and a number of whom offered advice and counsel to the committee. And after that, after that meeting, I asked the city manager to put the general subject of that commission on our agenda tonight with the intent that we have, or at least start to have, a conversation among ourselves. And the, my reason for doing that is because I was a bit alarmed at some of the things that I learned personally about the direction this is taking and or potential this direction is taking. And I did speak at the meeting, but I was speaking for myself. And, but I think that, I think the council needs to either individually or collectively weigh in on this subject before it gets too much further down the road. And at some point in time, I think that we may want to ask the two Laconia residents who are on that committee to come and meet with us. Now, perhaps we ought to figure out where we stand or either collectively or individually on this, on the related matters before we do that. But sometime within the next month or so, I think we should probably have those two gentlemen in, and Chris Chumway and Peter Spanos in to talk to them about where this is going and what they see and feel. And we can share with them our feelings on that as well. So that is coming up tonight under new business. But I just wanted you to know that that's why it's on the agenda tonight. There's no particular agenda in terms of asking you to address any specific issue or anything like that. It's more just for general conversation purposes. And it just seems to me that we really need to start paying, as a group, we need to start paying closer attention to this. I know I do and or feel like I do. And, you know, I don't, I don't, like anything else in life, the people who tend to win tend to be the people that show up. And if we don't show up and try to influence what direction this is going, we're not going to have much right to criticize that decision afterwards. Okay, committee, I'm sorry, Councilman Lippman.
Are you going to entertain that discussion under council comments or?
No, it's under new business.
New business, okay.
Okay, committee reports. We have any committee reports tonight? No, how about liaison reports? Liaison reports, Councilor Hamel.
I just want, I attended the Aprox and Rex meeting last Monday, and they're hot at work of putting together CIP proposal for the CIP committee, which had their first meeting last Tuesday. They had an organizational meeting, and now they'll be gathering the wish lists of all the departments. And in the next few meetings, we'll be interviewing them and also coming up with our scaling of the projects. That'll go to the planning department for approval, then on to the city manager. So that's where we are with that right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaison reports, Councilor Hanks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Heritage Commission, they realized it was out of their domain, but they expressed some real concern about the character of the Lakeport Square and the, just the never-ending boat storage and, well, as one referred to it, as boat hotels. And they're very concerned about the character that Lakeport's seemed to be taking.
All right, so are we talking about the fire station project or the other proposed project?
That was also mentioned, the fire station and also the proposed three-story boat storage on Union Avenue. And like I said, they realized it was out of their domain, but they did have some concern about the character that Lakeport was starting to take.
So can you articulate, I read, I'm trying to remember if it was a letter in the paper or something someone else said. And I, it wasn't enough information what I read to really ascertain what exactly the...
Well, their concern was the character of Lakeport and Lakeport Square is being just developed into boat storage, it seems. And there was some concern to them. I mean, not only is there the Lakeport Landing, but there's also Earl Marine, and now there's another proposed boat storage. I don't know how, where that's going to go, but it just seemed like driving down Union Avenue was going to be boat storage.
I think the one you're talking about is that vacant lot.
Yes.
On a corner of, I don't know if it's Walnut Street or what it is, that's owned by a local Realtor who's looking to put a three-story boat storage facility on that side. And I agree, that would look ridiculous, especially alongside of that nice Victorian house that's there. But he's had the property for sale for quite a few years.
Well, I, so my immediate reaction to what you all are saying is that this is a, is first and foremost at this point in time, a zoning issue.
Yeah.
And so, you know, the city charter is pretty specific in terms of how you change zoning or how you propose a change in zoning. And obviously, at some point in time, that has to go through the, has to go through the planning board. But it could be initiated by this council. It could be initiated by the planning board itself. It could be initiated by petition. All of, all of those avenues are open to the people who are concerned, upset about this.
Well, I think if this board can do that, I think we should initiate a look into on the boat storage, especially on the, on that side of the street where it's most, it's all houses, other than, you know, there's a few businesses there, but...
But that's a zone commercial.
Yeah, it is. So.
I mean, the, I mean, I don't know, I'm not defending at this point in time or the status quo in any way, shape or form, or advocating for any particular position. But I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, Union Avenue is clearly for most of its length, a commercial street. Certainly in that area it is. And that the houses are, the outlier is not the businesses. That once was the case. So now, you know, that doesn't mean that, I mean, boat storage is a specific use. And just because it's a commercial zone doesn't mean that boat storage has to be accepted in a commercial zone. I mean, it can be done on its own by zone basis. So if the council wishes to take the initiative for doing something about that, it certainly has that ability to do it. And so, have you got any advice as to what the proper procedure for the council? If individual counselors or a group of counselors wants to take action in that direction?
Sure, they can certainly go through me and to our planning director. And we can talk about what zones boat storage is currently allowed in. And if we didn't allow it in a commercial zone, you're basically borrowing that use or banning that use in all commercial zones as they currently stand today. You just can't say, oh, just not in the commercial zone from one side of the street on Union Ave. You would either have to create a new zone or ban it from also all commercial zones and figure out where you do want to allow it because you can't ban something like that completely from the city. But you could limit the zones that it was in as long as it was allowed. So I would suggest probably a, start a conversation with the planning director and just kind of look at the 10,000-foot view before you try to get into, we don't think we want boat storage on one side of Union Ave because there's a big ripple effect along there.
So whose ward is that in? Is that two up that far or is that six?
I think it is.
I think it's two.
It's Councilor Bound's ward?
Yes.
But that doesn't mean any of the rest of you can't start the ball rolling on this either. So do you, do you have any, this is the part that I found confusing about it, about what I read, which you reiterated. So what is the, what is perceived to be the character of Lakeport Square that's being destroyed?
Well, I think, and I, this is just, this is, and I'm paraphrasing the conversation, okay? Their concern was, when I say there, the Heritage Commission was, they felt, and Dean was at the meeting, so he could probably brief us a little bit on it. They were concerned that what they felt was the concept, the first conceptual plan for the Lakeport Fire Station. And what is there now is not what was perceived in their first conception. And Dean could speak to that, that it was, you know, that they did get a planning board approval for that, what's there now. Dean?
So they're saying that what's being built there now?
I can't.
Okay.
I can't ask Dean to, Mr. Mayor, would you ask Dean to address the council?
Yes. So the question seems to be, is what's being built now on the old Lakeport Fire Station site what was presented to city council?
The answer is, is no. The conceptual drawing that was part of your request for proposals is different than what was submitted, you know, actually submitted to the planning board for site review. The rear of the building that's being built, that was approved by the planning board, is higher than what the conceptual drawing that the city council saw as part of the request for proposals. The front part with the glass showroom, that remains essentially of what was presented to you. The rear is, is a clapboarded structure, but it is probably at the rear, one-third of the building is probably about 15 feet higher than what was shown in the conceptual drawing that was part of the request for proposals.
So the rear building is higher than what was submitted to the city council?
Correct.
All right, how much higher? A lot higher?
I would say about 15 feet higher, probably so one story higher than what was kind of presented to the council.
All right, so I guess the obvious question then is why, when that plan was submitted, was it not, was it not brought to city council's attention?
Well, I did. I did bring it to you when you had the discussion about withholding the building permit at that time and looking at the structural engineer. So you did have updated copies. We did discuss that storage and you had the current rendering at the time, probably around May or June. And it was certainly updated.
So now I'm really confused. So the, the plan that we saw, which I think was the second generation plan, that showed the rear building kind of having an 1890s look to it? Yep. That's my, those are my words. I don't think they described it that way, but it kind of had a retro look to it.
I think I could say to it, this is the one when the host tower was not structurally safe to stay there and it was coming down and they were putting up the replica host tower. So that was the rendering where there's a little bit higher.
It kind of had an old-timey fire station look to it.
So that's the one that you all saw during that conversation with the faux host tower look to it, yes. hose tower look to it, yes. That's what, that's what's being built today.
That is.
That's what's being built right now.
Yep.
Okay, so that had the height in it that's currently being built?
Correct.
So the, the height that you're seeing right now was the height that was on that rendering? There's no additional height beyond what was approved at the planning board and what the council saw?
So it's not true to say that they're building something that the city council didn't see?
Correct.
We saw it.
Correct.
Right?
I, I, if I might, Mr. Mayor, when, when buildings are under construction, particularly when you have a steel frame building as this one is, when they're basically just have the frame up as, and that's the, the status that they're at right now, framing the roof, they look ugly. And there's no question about that.
They what?
They look ugly, and, and there's no question about that. But, um, you know, once they get the outside walls on, they're gonna have a clapboard look on the, on the rear portion and the higher portion.
So is that, is that rear building going to be boat storage?
It's, it's a combination of, uh, sales, um, display and, and storage. Now, whether it's storage of, of all the new boats that they have on display, or whether they're gonna use it for winter storage, I, I'm not sure, but it's, it's three stories of, of bays for, for boats in the rear.
So how are they gonna get boats in and out of there?
The, the rear of the building will be large doors.
Will be what, large doors?
Large doors.
Really large doors.
Really large doors, yes. Yes.
But it's not gonna be open?
No, no.
Because I'm certain it wasn't open on the plans we looked at.
Correct. No, it will not be open. Yep. The, and they're going to reconstruct the, uh, facsimile of the hose tower, which will be even a little bit taller than, than what is now the rear portion of the building, and, and do a, a faux brick on that to make it look like, uh, the hose tower.
So if you could use in your own words, since you were at the same meeting, Councilor Haynes was at, what's the objection from the Heritage Commission for the height?
I think it's the, it's, it's the height in that it, it, it's, they, they perceive it as being out of character to, uh, the, the immediate, the surrounding buildings, which are, you know, like Avery's Restaurant.
I can't hear.
The, the immediate surrounding buildings like Avery's Restaurant and, and the, the commercial buildings at front on Elm Street are two stories, two and a half stories. This is obviously higher than that. When you're coming down Union Avenue...
Will it be higher than the old, uh, Oddfellows Hall?
The, uh, I'm not sure which, but is that the Opera House?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, no, it's about the same height as that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
When you're coming down Union Avenue, the, the, the tops of both of those buildings will appear to be about the same height. Um, the Lakeport Landing Building is probably a little bit taller because it's sitting lower, but in terms of perception, uh, as you're coming down Union Avenue from, uh, from, uh, in front of Irwin Marine, that the perception would be that they're about the same height. And, and the look that they're going for on the rear...
And you have the senior housing there, the Lakeside Village or whatever it's called, that's?
That's taller than that.
Five or six stories, right?
Absolutely. And the look that they're going for on the rear portion of the, of the new building is to try to mimic the architectural details of the, of the Opera House building where they were, has the very large windows. That's, that's the look that they were trying to mimic.
That's why I asked the question. It seems to me that height-wise, it's not out of character for the immediate neighborhood.
I don't think...
There's at least two other buildings that are, that are that high or higher.
I concur with Dean. I think it was just that the steel frame, it just looks...
Hideous is the word you're looking for.
Wow. Thank you, Councilor Dean.
It's, it's kind of like another building we have under construction and they, where they painted it a, an awful blue, but that's not, that's not the final color, thankfully, and, and...
I like that.
And it'll look better as the go along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on that?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Anyone else on the liaison report? Okay, we are to citizens' comments for current agenda items. This is the appropriate time on the agenda tonight for anyone who wishes to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda. Mr. Holmesy?
Good evening, everyone. Richard Holmesy, City Laconia. Been a resident here for 20 years, business and, uh, property owner. I want to pass some of my condolences to you for, uh, your recent loss and Armin's loss. Very, very, very nice people. Uh, didn't deal with her as much as Armin, but, uh, I did meet her a few times, and I want to pass some of my condolences.
Thank you.
Um, the sewer project in the city of Laconia, I don't know a lot about it. Um, I hear a lot of scuttlebutt, I own some property on Woodville, um, down near the Weers, and my residence is on Summit Ave, 84 Summit Ave, where I already have city sewer. But, um, I do have a concern, a lot of neighbors have concerns, they're not here tonight. Some people have been telling me that they've been dealing with this sewer problem, waiting, waiting, waiting for Woodville to get sewer for decades. Uh, promises have been made, and I, and I say scuttlebutt because you hear, you hear, you don't know where it's coming from, you don't know if it's true, if people want to make it up, but I understand, um, I've start, talked to Mr. Myers quite a bit, I've talked to Wes Anderson and Dean, and, um, I try to keep up on as much as I can. And, you know, my, my position at this point is, we need to protect, um, I, I see a lot of developments trying to come in the city, and, and I think the city's on a, on a rush to develop and generate taxes and, and, and generate, uh, flow of traffic and generate vacant land, and, and all these things are really good at times. But to put aside developments that have been in, in, and, uh, been built since the 70s and have been promised sewer over and over and over, and to simply push them aside because possibly we can develop over here if we give them sewer, um, I don't think it's fair and reasonable at this point. Um, I do understand the master plan has been made, I don't know how long ago, to the tune of $140,000 or so, and it hasn't been, um, totally utilized yet. Um, I see some developments on Endicott and down near the Weers and on, uh, Weers Boulevard. They, they clear these trees and they leave them vacant for five years. They got permits that have expired. They're not developing them, they're not following through, they're not finishing them. Governor's Crossing sits there 12 years, there's been 11 extensions on that. So people are already selling homes out of there and leaving because they're sick of looking at sand piles, Jersey barriers, weeds, construction materials, and no work being going, going on. And I know personally that Mr. Latenda, who owns it, has been here before and asking for extension, extension, extension. The economy's bad, the economy's bad, the economy's bad. But he's ripping apart Guilford and his self-storage facility. So it depends on where they, where people want to put their money. And I understand the city has problems with jobs, and they're trying to get more jobs and more people to live here. But you can't live here and, and buy a house here or pay for an apartment because you can't afford, because the payroll, the payroll's down. But to ignore a whole neighborhood that's been there for decades, that is close to wetlands, that is close to the lake, that has leaching fields and old tanks, we don't know how old these, these people's septic tanks are. Now, the properties that I bought on Woodville are the last two approved lots from the Woodville Development, uh, Lot Four and Five. Recently, we've put them into one lot, we've combined them, and we're working with, uh, Conservation, a couple of committees to, to make them usable, more accessible, a single lot. But over the decades that it's been, when it was, when it was approved, uh, the, the lots I bought, when they were approved back in the day, there was no wetland setback. Then there was 25 feet, then it's 50. So now, my lots are virtually non-buildable right now, and we're working on that. But to take away, um, lots that were usable at one point, now they're not, and, and if sewer came in, my lots would then be much more usable, because I wouldn't have to provide square footage for septic and leaching fields. So to protect the wetlands, to be fair to the neighbors, to be fair to the neighborhoods, the, the people on Rolling Lane and, and, and Woodville and so forth, all these, 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 there's about 300 homes, I think, and, and to protect the waterfront, Lake Wenupusaki and the, the, the product running downhill and tanks rotting out and so forth, I think we need to really look at and, and, and start off with the oldest development or the next one in line, which is Woodville, and work our way down to the new developments. But some of these new developments, um, I don't know how the money works, I don't know if you, if, if the city requires the developer to pay a certain portion, or if they, if the city provides it at no charge and the developer can, can build whatever. I'm sure everyone can work together and figure it out, but I think we need to address Woodville. It's developed, it's been promised till the cows come home, and to ignore them would be like spitting in their face. And I'm a new...
We can answer your question pretty quickly, and that is...
Sure.
As far as the, take Governor's Crossing, the city did not provide sewer for Governor's Crossing.
And any of the new developments that are hooking into city sewer or doing so are at developers' expense. The Woodville area was an existing development that we, as the council's aware, was presented, and we'll be talking about it tonight, that didn't have sewer back in the day, and if the city was going to expand, there's certainly an impact, both to ratepayers of the sewer system as well as those individual folks we're hooking up. But any new sewer, I should back up, the city has not voluntarily gone out and initiated expansion of the sewer system to existing homes. Any expansion has occurred through new development on the developer's dime.
Well, that's the answer to that.
Is that the infrastructure or getting the sewer to the, the site? I'm sorry, to the site is, is the developer's cost?
Yes.
Or in the site?
Both.
To get it hooked up, it would be the developer's cost, and then there's a hookup fee per each unit that's coming online as well.
Right, so let's say, uh, Governor's Crossing for, for talking, for, for discussion. The lines were brought down the street on Governor's Crossing side of the road, opposite Woodville, and then, so, so who paid for the lines to be brought down the street and, and, on, on Endicott? Who paid for that to be brought to the property? The city or, or the developer?
I, I would have to look into that one specifically to know if they were already there, just like you've got sewer down on your property on Summit you indicated.
Correct.
But a street over, it's, it's not accessible on Woodville, so I'd have to look back in as to where the, you know, the sewer infrastructure was installed many, many years ago. So I don't have that specific answer. We certainly can get it and provide it to you.
But I'm, so I'm just adding to this kind of ad hoc, if you will.
Please.
And that is that, because, because we're looking into this in terms of long-term policy.
Yeah.
But my understanding is, current policy and long-time existing policy is that if, if I've got a project or a lot or whatever, and it's a mile away from the closest sewer hookup, and I want sewer to that property, the city's not gonna build a mile-long sewer line to get pro, to get, at their, at the city's expense to get to my property. So I gotta pay for the whole mile, not just for the hookup onto my property from that mile.
Is that this current status, Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay, so that would make logical sense. So just to finish up, I won't keep too much of your time. Summit Ave, where I reside, got it back in 91, and it went all the way down, or it came from Wentworth Cove Road, if I'm correct, and it comes down Wentworth Cove Road, turns right at my house diagonally, goes across, and then it goes out to Franklin, if I'm correct. Um, and all those houses have them. So the only area that doesn't have it, um, is, is the Woodville-Rolling Lane area. And like I said, it deliberately goes across the street, they have water, they have sewer, they have fire hydrants, the whole Woodville zone doesn't. And I just think it's probably irresponsible for us to ignore that. I am not sure you're not gonna ignore it, but I just want to emphasize how much we really need it. We, we desperately need it to, to better the homes, to expand the homes, to make them year-round homes, um, to update them, you know, and so forth, and protect, like I said, the wetlands and Lake Wenupusaki. Thank you, and again, once again, my condolences to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? No? All right, we'll, uh, move on to the city manager's report, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in your packet tonight, you've got two updates. The first one is the Laconia, yeah, the Laconia project updates. A lot of construction still continuing. We've been back in Court Street for the past couple of weeks, working on, uh, storm drains. You'll see them going all the way down towards, uh, towards the bridge at this point. Uh, you can also see that all the new poles are in, in areas where we haven't been able to get all of the wires off of the old poles. Those have been cut and bracketed to the existing pole, because those poles need to be gone as we continue to move forward with the drainage, the sidewalks, and the road repair. So, um, companies are still moving wires, but the old poles are not gonna be in our way, uh, and we'll be working, uh, as hard as we can up until the end of construction season in November there. Additionally, on Pleasant Street, uh, if you go by there now, you'll see the sidewalks are paved. We still have some fill-in and, and seating to do on the sub-lons, but sidewalks are down, some of the tie-ins to the driveways are done, the manhole covers are raised, so we'll be doing the, uh, the, the second, uh, wearing course, if you will, of pavement, uh, over the next couple of weeks. We will be starting in Lakeport on Union Ave, um, heading toward Stark Street, uh, probably around two weeks from now as well. We do have a couple of projects I've mentioned before, dealing with Messer Street Drainage and also the Riverwalk, uh, down here by the canal, uh, that'll take place in conjunction with the lake drawdown when that happens in October, so those are getting ready to go. Uh, the city did close on both of the bonds that were approved during the budget process today, so the $2.5 million General Street Bond and the $700,000 for the Police Radio Communication Tower Project were both closed on today, and funds, uh, will be wired to the city in the next day or so. Um, other projects that we've got going on, we're out to bid right now on the Memorial Park Softball Irrigation, that was approved in the budget, uh, this year as well, so we're looking to have that, uh, installed this fall, so that is ready to go for, uh, for springtime. Now, there's a few other project updates in your, in your packet, but that's, uh, those are the, those are the big ones, I think.
Councilor, let me ask a question. On the Court Street, uh, project, in terms of what it's gonna be like over the winter, can you give a picture of that?
I believe we're gonna be buttoned up. We, you know, it's not gonna be left open. Our intention is to be in there, and again, um, working on the drainage now, then we'll be pulling out some of the substandard, uh, base. There's a fair amount of material coming out of the street, being, uh, replaced with a better quality base to it, and then the paving, and is the attempt to get both, the base, the base layer will be done, but it will be no different than we did with Lakeside Avenue. It'll be buttoned up, there'll be no raised structures, there'll be the base course of asphalt there, and for, and there'll be striping, so for all intents and purposes, other than having the final wearing course, that will be good to go throughout the winter.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Second report in your packet is the economic development report. Probably sound like a broken record here, but unemployment locally in the city, county, the largest cities in the state and the state overall are all running well below 3% and have been for, um, some time now. We have the August inflation number, it's, uh, it's, uh, come down a little bit from the prior three months where it was running at 2.8 or 2.9%, so the August number came in at 2.7%. We've got a few links there for updates, dealing the Lakes Region Business Resource Fair, um, celebrating New Hampshire's manufacturing at the Bellknap Mill is coming up in October. Other business resources, again, the folks are reading these reports online, we do have hyperlinks that they can, um, click on to, um, to bring them to additional information on the items that I just mentioned. Uh, you, I also want to mention to you that, um, we had a very positive meeting down at the Weers Community Center on Friday night with residents of the Methodist Campground area as one of the, uh, streets, uh, that we have no record of the city formally accepting them at this point, in discussion about what we're gonna be following up on, on our special meeting, which takes place a week from tonight, October 1st, where we'll have, uh, public works as well as the city attorney, and talking about an approach for accepting some of these streets as city streets, where the ownership and the acceptance, um, is, uh, is not clearly, I, being identified through our research, but we think we've got a good approach. We shared that with probably a room full of about 50 people. Uh, Wes was there as Public Works Director, Dean Trefethan was there, Planning Director, I was down there. I think the folks appreciated that we had a meeting on a Friday night at 6:30 to allow those who were coming up for the weekend to participate, as opposed to doing it during the week when many of them weren't. And again, uh, we had 50 folks there, so, uh, I think we kind of broached the concept that we'll be sharing with the council a week from tonight, uh, and overall, I think that was generally well-accepted as a common sense approach on how we can kind of keep the status quo of the plowing and, and some of the basic services that we've been doing down there. So, um, I don't want to give it all away, but that'll, it's a teaser for, uh, for next Monday night for all of you. Uh, and then finally, I put this handout on your desk this evening, uh, as you should all have a copy in front of you. Uh, I think most of you, uh, recall that I am the State of New Hampshire Municipal Employer Representative to the New Hampshire Retirement System Board. Uh, it's a, it's a 15-member board made up of, uh, various folks who, who wear various hats in the appointment process. So on the bottom part of the page, you can see the rates that were currently... So on the bottom part of the page, you can see the rates that we're currently paying for, uh, through, uh, June 30th of next year. So with the budget we're working on, the retirement system is broken up into what is commonly referred to as Group One and Group Two employees. Group One, uh, you have teachers, and then every other municipal employee who is not police or fire falls under the employees' rate. So you can see on the bold over on the right currently, the city's share towards the retirement system based on payroll for employees is the 11.38%. Teachers is 17.36, and under Group Two, you have a separate line item for both police and fire. And the police number currently is 29.43, and the fire is 31.89. The rates, um, go through a process with the actuaries, looking at performance, looking at, um, how assumptions that are made based on the size of the group, the age of the group, the mortality of the group, the number of retirees, when they retire, all of that type of stuff. Uh, the Retirement System Board works with actuaries and goes through, and then we set the rates every two years. So the rates just were set, uh, earlier this month, and these will be the rates that go into effect next July 1, and they're good for two years. So those are the rates you see at the top of the page for fiscal year '20 and '21. You can see the employees have a slight reduction of about 3, um, 30 basis points, I should say. So from 11.38% of payroll down to 11.17. I'm gonna skip the teachers for a second, but I'll come back to that. Uh, police dropped a full percentage point from 29.43 to 28.43, and fire dropped 1.8, uh, percentage point. So from 31.89 down to 30.09. Other than a brief couple-of-month window in 2011, when some legislative changes went into effect for the retirement system, this is the first time there's been a rate reduction in employer rates since the 1990s. Um, so a significant, uh, a couple of things are in play here. The, the return to the market have been solid over the last couple of years. Um, but also, we're kind of hitting the point where that big unfunded liability that was put into its own 30-year amortization back into 2011 to kind of pay that down, as you would almost like on a mortgage, that's due to be paid off, paid off in 2039. Some of those, uh, conditions are changing. We're seeing more folks retire who have, um, been in the pre-2011, when the benefits were a little bit richer and you didn't have to work as long or be as old in order to retire and collect benefits. So the folks who were hired after 2011, whatever the date was, have to work a little bit longer and be a little bit older in order to retire with full benefits. So some of the demographics of more retirees occurring and new hires coming into the mix are what's now stabilizing that. And the expectation is that, that level amortization that's gonna be paid off over what was 30 years, and we have about, uh, 21 years left on, or 20 years left, is gonna stabilize or slowly come down. So long-term, we would expect the rates to also follow that, um, and stabilize or come down. The reason the teachers' group went up from, uh, 17.36 to 17.8 is really based on one of the assumptions, one of the bigger assumptions, that typically the board would not be looking to adjust, um, other than after a five-year review. And the, um, one item that was not tracking where we thought was the growth in teacher payroll. As we all know, there are not as many children in the school system. Therefore, as some teachers are retiring, those positions aren't being filled. So while we're seeing healthy growth in the overall payroll for police, fire, and municipal employees, the payroll growth on the teacher end of it was not growing at that rate. So rather than ride out an assumption that we knew wasn't panning out for the next two and a half years and not adjusting it until kind of the five-year review of the major actuarial assumptions, the board felt that prudent to go in right now and to make the adjustment to reflect that, and that's what drove that. So it wasn't a significant increase, but about a half a percentage point there, and that's why. And that was, that was solely based on an actuarial change based on that payroll growth. So, um, not huge numbers in the reduction, but for the first time since the late 90s, we're pleased. And I think longer term, we should continue to see, um, you know, all things being equal, some stabilization or some small reductions, uh, over the next decade or two. So happy to report that, and these rates will be included in the budget that we will be working on uh, late winter and into spring, and then will go into effect for next July 1. So I'm happy to take questions on that, or anything else I've covered tonight, or anything else you may have.
Questions or comments for the city manager?
I, I have a couple, if I might, uh, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I apologize. I, uh, wanted to ask about two or three things. Uh, one, very quickly, and I would address to the manager, but for Wes. There was some discussion, um, at a previous meeting about Pearly Pond and, uh, cleaning up around it. And as I understood it, at least, uh, the thought was that Public Works was gonna contribute to help to do that cleanup. Haven't seen much, so I thought maybe we could ask Wes what the status is.
I think Kevin Dunleavy gave the update, and I think they were looking to do more of that during the winter months, when it was a little bit easier to, um, get in around the edge of the lake. But I can certainly check with Kevin and with Wes and, and get back to see if there's anything we're gonna do now. But I think some of that clearing and cutting was targeted for the winter months, and it would be better suited for us to get in around the water's edge and stuff. But I'll, I can double-check that.
Okay, and would that include, uh, Opechey by the, by the park?
Yes, we definitely felt that that would be better accessible from the water end as, uh, we have ice in over there. So that'll be a winter project as well.
The second item I wanted to bring up, Mayor, I hope you'll indulge me for a moment. And that is, uh, we all received the Airbnb decision out of, out of Portsmouth. Everyone here knows I'm not a lawyer, and anybody who knows me well knows I wouldn't claim that fame. But I think even a layperson can read what was in that decision and, and think that we have a right to move forward on that issue sooner rather than later. Seems like I say that a lot here. I'd like to know what we're doing. I mean, I, I don't want this to drag on for much longer if we can avoid that.
So I guess the question is, we left it in your hands at the last meeting. What, what's the status?
So I forwarded that to all of you. We reached out to legal counsel. We were getting ready to, um, set up the meeting, and because of the unfortunate incidents last week that has pulled all of my attention in different directions, um, we're looking to get together, and Dean and I are scheduling a time, um, with our legal counsel to talk about that specifically. And I've let our legal counsel know that Attorney Fitzgerald also had some thoughts, and at some point, we certainly want to include that take. So it's, we, the, the day after the meeting, um, I started looking to schedule that in, and, and, like I say, we were, um, we've been sidetracked for this past, uh, week.
Will, so will this be back on our agenda on October 8?
Yeah, we wanted to get some thoughts and, and get some direction based on that case and where we think we can go, and what Attorney Fitzgerald can contribute to the conversation, and be able to frame some options that either we feel that we have right now or can have going forward. Uh, and on a similar note, uh, the NHMA Policy Conference was a week ago Friday. Um, that did get approved as a policy, and I was able to bring that forward and ask that it be, uh, bumped up from a priority policy to the action policy, and that motion passed as well. So it'll be something that NHMA will be looking to actively write and support and seek sponsors of legislation to provide more options for municipalities going forward as well. Certainly, that won't take place until the start of the new legislative session after January. But I, we will be back to you much sooner than that with recommendations based on the Portsmouth case and, uh, some of the thoughts of Attorney Fitzgerald.
Will, will we be meeting on the 8th, by the way?
Uh, I, I think by charter, uh, that always defaults to the Tuesday night by charter. That's one of the holidays that if, uh,
The 9th.
The 9th, so it's, uh, you can mark your calendars. We're meeting a week from tonight for the workshop, special meeting just on the streets. And then it'll be the Tuesday night, the 9th, instead of Columbus Day.
All right, back to you, Counselor.
I, I, I think the manager has, uh, has explained that we're meeting next week with regards to the streets generally. Uh, I wanted to know if we were looking at more than one, uh, solution to those, to those problems. I mean, there are, we, we've all discussed a street that's deeded private. But I don't think that means that we should walk away from them. And, uh, I, I had hoped to, to perhaps pursue the matter tonight. I know Councilman, uh, Hosmer has, uh, suggested at our next meeting, he wanted to deal with Pendleton Beach. So I guess my, my, my question
At our next regular meeting?
Next regular meeting, October 9th.
9th.
I, I, I think there's a, a division of, of these streets, at least at, at the ones I've looked at so far. Some are in pretty poor condition, some are in average condition, not the best, but average condition. Uh, and, uh, some, I don't, I, I think are decades away from being acceptable. But I don't want to leave those people without fire, police, and other protections, uh, just because they haven't met. You know, how many inches of fill we have to have, or how wide it has to be. They've lived there decades, thinking they were on a public street, and, and essentially, an insurance company changed that. And, and I'd like us to do something. And, and I, so I guess my question to the manager is, I know he, because he's spoken to me about it, uh, mentioned Moltenboro and their, their blanket, uh, acceptance of roads as fire lanes or something along that line. I'm hoping we can accept a lot of these roads, but I think places like Pendleton and some of the others, I'd like to know if, if he has worked at all towards language that would allow us to create fire lanes for places like Pendleton.
So Counselor Hosmer did come in and meet with, uh, Wes and myself last Tuesday, and he has asked for specifically Pendleton and a boathouse to be placed on the agenda for October 9th when he's back. So that one we've addressed. The approach that we shared with the folks at the Methodist Campground that we're gonna share with you on next Monday night, if, if, we think we've got somewhere around 50 streets that are problematic in one way, shape, or form. We think the approach we're gonna recommend to you next week, um, will handle about 40 of those and be satisfactory to the folks who live on those streets in order to keep services. And, and then if you put the Pendleton and, and the, uh, uh, the other one in there into the mix, there may be a handful that we've still gotta kind of work through. But nobody is being cut off. If they're receiving services right now, nobody is being cut off from any services. There's no deadlines, um, for any of the other ones. And I think once we get through next, uh, next Monday night, uh, I think, hopefully, you'll be in a good spot that we're doing something that's actually gonna be a step above the emergency lane, because the emergency lane definition by state law says you just have to make the road passable. That means replacing, you know, culverts and, and a cut and clear of a tree if it comes down, but you're not going back and limbing the tree and moving it. You're not fixing potholes if it's still passable. That's the definition of an emergency lane. The acceptance as is, which we're looking to talk about, truly makes it a city street and brings it up, and it takes that, it takes that designation, which also could be, um, delicate on an emergency lane. One of butters can say, "I don't want it," and it, it can be pulled at any time. At any time, a council could go in and say, "We don't want to make that an emergency lane anymore." And that designation could go away. So the acceptance that we're gonna be representing to you, um, makes it permanent, and I think gives these butters a, a little bit of peace of mind that, you know, this can't be yanked out at any time, uh, in the future. They're solid going forward. And I think that will take care of more than 80 to 85% of these problematic streets. Couple of them are quirky and have nuances that'll probably be on a case-by-case basis. But again, nobody is being shut off of anything for this winter, at the earliest. They may never be shut off, but there's nobody who's up against a clock for, um, having something not work for them for this winter. So I hope that gives you confidence through to next Monday.
I can survive that long, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for the manager?
I could just do the rest of next Monday's meeting now, he wouldn't have to come.
That's an idea. All right, we're on to, uh, new business. And the first item under new business is the, uh, previously mentioned Lake Shore Redevelopment Planning Commission Discussion. And I will say, just as a matter of introduction here, um, that the, uh, to very quickly get everyone on the same page, the, uh, the reason for the public hearing that was held last week at the middle school, which was attended by three members of council, plus, um, the city manager was there, and, um, the planning director was also there, may have been others if I missed anybody.
Public Works Director was there as well.
Public, I'm sorry. That's right. And his bride.
His bride.
She was there also, yes. I remember that now. I always know her, I don't. Okay, um, anyway, the reason they had a public hearing at this particular time is because they had a, uh, they had a report, if you will, from the, their second consultant, whose name escapes me. Some firm, something K, M, M, J or something, or
Or something, yes.
Something like that, whatever. And, uh, they were, they have been charged with coming up with a development plan for the property. And, uh, so they, they came back a few weeks back and, and produced their findings and whatnot, and made a presentation to the commission, and then the commission, as I said, held a public hearing on those ideas last week. And I think, uh, those of you who were there that night, uh, feel free to, uh, either correct me or add or subtract to what I'm saying. Uh, but I think it would be fair to characterize that, uh, plus the reporting that has been, uh, in, in the Union Leader and in the Daily Sun on this issue, that, uh, they have proposed, well, one very important fact, uh, is that, as best I can tell, um, the consultants were not given specific, or at least very specific, input into the parameters for what they were going to propose. It wasn't, they weren't given a list of do's or don'ts or whatever. It was just sort of like, here's this piece of property, and, and what do you think we should do with it? And, and, uh, so they did some research or subcontracted or something or other to say, oh, and this, I think, is one of the critical decisions that they made now, not the commission, from what I can tell, that they made was, let's take a look at what the current market conditions are for Laconia, the Lakes Region, New Hampshire, and say, what's feasible in this day and age for development potential for this property? In other words, it would be relatively easy for any of us to suggest some relatively far-fetched idea that what would be ideal for this property would be for Yale to decide they don't want to be in Connecticut anymore and move to Laconia. Uh, that's unlikely to happen, and so they would have probably dismissed that possibility out of hand. But I don't think they were given parameters about what might or might not be acceptable to the community, to the state, to whomever. And, uh, so keep that in mind, because at this point in time, I think these consultants are saying these are things that are possible based on current market conditions for what might be done with that property that's feasible, conceivable. And, um, they see it clearly as a multi-use, uh, piece of property in terms of, uh, a varied development combining a number of different elements. So a lot of the elements, they, they provoke, they propose three main concepts, if you will. But each of those concepts had elements of each other. So it was more like, where's the emphasis on this as opposed to what's secondary? Because there were some, almost everything being mentioned was, was in all of the plans in some combination. And, but the three major proposals were, um, a, a so-called continuing care facility, meaning a nursing home, for lack of a better, for, to put in plain English. And other sub-development around that nursing home. Second was a resort hotel and related facilities around a resort hotel. And the third thing was a youth sports complex that you, I'm sure, have read that there's a group headed by Scott Crowder that's been, uh, trying to vet the idea of developing a regional attraction, if you will, of more, a complex of indoor and outdoor sporting facilities that would attract youth tournaments and that sort of thing, uh, as a, as an economic engine. And, uh, so each of these proposals that they showed contained some elements of those three, central core ideas with various emphasis. But then also importantly, each of those three possibilities or combinations of But then also importantly, each of those three possibilities, or combinations of those possibilities, included a housing component that was not the focus of either, of any of them, but definitely included two different kinds of housing, which I think is very important here, that they, that they're focusing on. And again, they're looking now at, at contemporary needs, if you will, from their standpoint, as opposed to a, a, uh, an instruction on the part of anyone to, it must include this, or not include that, sort of thing. So the two specific kinds of housing that are in each one of their possibilities are, to use the euphemism of the moment, age-restricted housing. Talking about single-family homes here. And, uh, I sarcastically, I would have to admit, said, I assume when you say age, uh, restricted housing, you don't mean forty and under. And, no, it means fifty-five or older, and, and older. It doesn't mean forty and younger. So that's, that was a common component of all of the plans. And then the second component of all the plans was starter homes. And I'm using that word advisedly, uh, because there's a lot of, as I think we all know, there's a lot of preconceived notions and prejudice, if you will, bias around different euphemisms for, for that housing. Some people call it low-income housing, some call it workforce housing, some call it, so call it affordable housing, and, uh, they're calling it starter housing. But each of their plans has a significant component of it, of so-called starter hous- housing. And, and in each of these plans. And by that, I think that they're, they're, uh, and this is interesting, because getting back to zoning issues we're talking about, they're, they're proposing, right now, that land is zoned two acres. And you, for those of you on the council who've been around long enough to have done this, the first thing the city council did, for a recommendation from the planning department, as I recall, upon the state closing down the prison, was to rezone that land to be as restrictive as possible with regard to housing. And so you change, the council changed the zoning on that to two-acre zoning, uh, on that property. So they're, they're, under their definition of starter housing, or their plans for starter housing, the lots would be significantly more dense than any place that's currently allowed in the city under current zoning. Our minimum lot size now in the city, under current zoning, is ten thousand square feet. So that's about four units an acre, a little over four units an acre. And, uh, they're proposing four thousand square feet for one of these houses. And they showed some footprints of how that could easily accommodate many of the current houses in Laconia, without making them look overly crowded. These are single-family detached homes with a detached garage. They were showing some schematics that, that indicated this could easily fit on a four thousand square foot lot without making it look overly crowded and whatnot, and that sort of thing. So obviously, we'd have to relook at, at zoning in the city to make anything like that, uh, that feasible. So that, in a nutshell, is kind of where they are. And to my knowledge, the, the commission itself has not reacted to this as of yet, at least publicly, they have not. In the sense that I have had some private conversations, as I'm sure probably some of the rest of you have had, with commission members. And they may have opinions as to whether this is a starter, or a non-starter, or whatever, about individual aspects of all this. They, as a group, I don't think have, have even discussed it publicly, to where they're going to say, well, that's a, you know, that idea is, you know, don't do that, because we're not going to approve that, or whatever, so we're not. So this is a good time for us, I think, to start weighing in on this. So I'll shut up here in a second and, and let you all weigh in to the extent that you want to. But I think, I think, uh, my personal bias here is that we need to become involved in this, preferably as a council. Speaking as one, to the extent that it's possible. We are the only elected officials outside the Police Commission, which isn't really involved in this issue and whatnot. And I think it's important that, uh, that we play a role in, in, uh, in official city input into this, into this idea. Because as I said, what I fear is that, uh, you know, if, 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 and I, and I, um, this sounds prejudicial, and I don't mean it to sound as presidential as it does, but, uh, because I'm one of the people about to say something about. But if you'd asked me before the meeting the other night, who was going to be there, I could have told you, you know, probably fifty percent or more of the people who were in the room, I could have told you who they were going to be, including myself. And, and it's very predictable. And those people, including myself, are going to have an outsized influence on this, because, as I said earlier, they show up, and they make speeches, and they tell people what they want, and they advocate for their positions. And all the rest of us who don't do that are going to be at a disadvantage for not having done that. So with that, I will, uh, I will ask for, uh, input from those of you who were there, and those of you who were not. Anybody want to weigh in? Councillor Cheney.
Mayor, first, I, I, I would, I've attended all but one of their meetings. And, um, the word that keeps coming up is market analysis, which is driving what's being presented. And comments like, and, and I paraphrase, "It's hard to get to Laconia. There's no easy access to the city from ninety-three, or, or from the south, or whatever." Which has driven some of this discussion towards moderately priced housing, or entry-level housing, whatever. I, I want to thank you for, for stepping up the other night and mentioning that that's not what the legislature, uh, proposed this commission should be looking at. I was aware, because, uh, in my former employment, we, uh, one of our facilities was on that ground, so I had paid attention for that very reason, back when the legislation was going on, thinking I might have to move a million-dollar facility somewhere else in the state. And every meeting I attended at the legislature discussed economic development and job creation. And although moderately priced or entry-level housing will create short-term jobs, it's not what the legislature was, was suggesting, as I understood it. So I, I speak to support your, your position that we need to get involved much more than we have been. I've been to the meetings, as has the mayor, and, uh, the manager, and, and the mayor, and Dean's been there, uh, a, a number of times. But I think we need to, uh, uh, get more directly involved. Perhaps ask the, the commission at some point if they would meet with us, so that we can talk with them. I know you mentioned inviting the two resident members. I don't think it would hurt to invite the whole commission to come, um, and, and let them know that we're interested in what the legislature, um, suggested that property should be used for. So, uh, again, I, I thank you for stepping up and, and the comments that you made at that meeting. And, uh, I look forward to working with you and the rest of the council, and coming up with a, a, a full-blown position on what should go on up there. I, I think we're desperate, and I, I don't mean to interrupt, Henry. I, I did it one meeting over here, and, and so I tell you that it's not anything official I've ever heard, but the question was raised, is the state obligated to obey the city zoning? And, uh, I suggested they were, but I have no idea whether I was right or not. So, um, that's why I think we need to be involved, because I'm not sure zoning alone would be enough to stop this.
Councillor Levman.
I'm concerned that the proposals that you outlined, um, compound our demographic-
Yep.
-problem, and make our economic vitality, vitality as a city, um, go in the reverse direction, as opposed to moving it forward. You know, we have an imbalance of, um, older versus younger, so age-restricted housing is exactly the opposite direction of where we want to go. We've talked about the balance between middle class and, um, the rest of the community as being out of balance. And, uh, you know, I think those two issues there are, are, uh, really stabs in the back, if you will, with respect to, you know, how Laconia could be helped by the development of that land, you know? So I'm, I'm really concerned about those two particular things. And, you know, the, the continuing retirement community, we have one, um, that, you know, has a challenge in and of itself to remain financially viable and protect and serve the people that they have. And, um, you know, if you think it costs a lot to educate a student, um, it's a lot more-
Take care of the elderly.
Take care of the elderly in the Belknap County Nursing Home, we're adding to the tax burden in Belknap County, which is, so I've got some real problems with where they are. So I encourage the mayor to get us engaged a little bit better in this.
Councillor Hamel.
I too want to thank you for your input at the meeting the other night. And I agree with, uh, Henry and, and Bruce, uh, on what was, um, proposed there. It, it basically would be cluster housing, is what they're, they're looking to put there. And, um, it, it, it fits in the demographics of the piece of land, but I don't think that's what we need there. And seemed like the, the theme of that night, and, and I, they, they had some of these meetings several years ago, same, same kind of thing, when they were looking to transfer the property to us, or something. But they had some meetings roughly the same thing. And, um, the theme back then was kind of the same theme, is that, uh, the people that were there kind of want to leave it in a agricultural state, um, for farming, or whatever, you know, a good piece of the property. And, uh, I think that piece of property is a lot more valuable, uh, than, you know, just to use it as farming. There's, there's probably some portions that could be done, uh, but, uh, I think the majority of that needs to be developed. I, I think it was interesting, the sports complex idea. To me, that, that, that sounds feasible, along with a hotel there to support, uh, the activities. And in my mind, that's something that could probably be done fairly quickly, uh, and, and get a start on this project, or start to use up that land, uh, that, so that'd be beneficial to everyone. So I, I, I think the proposal that they have, or, or theory, uh, for the use of that land right now is not acceptable to the city. And I agree that I think the council needs to be more involved. And I think we need to share that, with that commission, as Bruce said, uh, to get them here, and you said, um, to kind of guide them on what we would like to see there. So, I mean, there was people from New Hampton, from Ashland, I, I mean, uh, sandwich, all over, that were saying, well, this is how it should be. And I think it's more up to the local residents and, and this council to, um, come up with some ideas, or avenues, uh, of what we think it should be.
Councillor Haynes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of in agreement with both councillor Hamel and councillor Levman. As far as the housing is concerned, I think that's, I'm not against restrictive housing, but I don't think that's the place for it. And I do think that the sports complex is an idea that needs to be looked into. A hotel, I think, um, you know, I say, it'd sound like a broken record, but younger people want to recreate, and, you know, I know it sounds kind of trite, but if you build it, they will come.
So let me add one, one piece of, uh, information that's semi-editorial on the, uh, maybe more than semi, on the sports complex idea. The, the, uh, I had a, I had a fairly lengthy conversation within the last couple of weeks before that meeting with Mr. Crowder, uh, trying to get a better understanding of exactly where he's coming from, and where he at, where he is at. And, uh, I, uh, I certainly don't want to be unfair to him in any way, shape, or form, because I think he's, you know, he's building a fair amount of momentum behind his idea. But I want to stress at this point in time, that based on the conversation that I had with him, at this point in time, it would not be, in my opinion, correct to call what he is proposing a plan. It is an idea, not a plan. There's no, here's the research, we've done everything, we've, we've figured out that it's feasible, and we can draw people within six hundred miles of here, or whatever, this is how many soccer fields we need, and this is how many hockey rinks we need, or anything like that. It's, it's much more primitive an idea at this point in time than it is, uh, and, and, and he's quite candid about the fact that what he would like to do, and perhaps this is our recommendation, or one of our recommendations to the commission, is, uh, there, there is no such research. And they are in agreement, Mr. Crowder and his friends are in agreement, that that kind of research, feasibility study, is necessary. They want this commission to pay for that. So in other words, they're saying, yes, a feasibility study needs to be done to determine just how, how big a facility you could build in Laconia, and how, you know, what kind of hotel would need to accompany it, or, you know, that sort of thing. And reasonably, how big an area geographically could we be expected to draw from if we did build it? Who would own it? I mean, all these kinds of questions, who would manage it? Who would take the risk? You know, none of this is decided at all, so it's not like they've got a proposal that somebody said, here's a proposal, you need to adopt this. It's not in that form. And so if the commission chooses to follow through on this, which personally, I hope they do, at least from an exploratory standpoint, it's really pretty close to starting from scratch. And, and using their own resources and their own money to vet it. So they would have to have pretty reasonable expectation that there's, that it's somewhat feasible in order to spend the money, I think, probably, to have that feasibility study done in the first place. I just wanted you all to be aware that there's no concrete proposal on the table for that facility.
Oh, I understand that. And, and councillor Cheney, uh, I don't remember, was it their August meeting? Because I was at one of the meetings that you were at. And they talked about the challenges of the topography, and the, the slopes, and the challenges of so many fea- so many fields that they could put without really, um, dealing into the, uh, to the topography, what would fit, and the whole way.
And they also talked about that issue of people getting here.
Right.
That, that Laconia is landlocked, if you will, um, in, in terms of people coming from great distances. They, they come up ninety-three, and then they hit Route Three. And, and at least the people who were studying it were suggesting that's a, a strong negative for that piece of property.
The, uh, the other thing that I would, that I would report on, uh, I was just talking to the city manager about this earlier today. And I didn't say anything about it the other night, because it was a personal observation, and no one else really commented on it. And so I thought, well, this will be something for another day, but I filed it away. And again, I think this was showing the, uh, I started to use the word bias, and I don't know, that has a negative connotation to it, so I don't know what the right word is. But I think this is an idea that's, I suspect, is driven by the consultants, not by direction they were given. But I was struck in looking at all of the proposals they put up on the board about how low-intensity they all were. And I think they used the, if I recall, those of you who were there can correct me on this, but I think they used the, the, the percentage they used was fifty percent, uh, at some point in the presentation. And, and so it, it didn't, it didn't matter what they were proposing in terms of the mix of housing versus hotel versus nursing home versus whatever. But one common theme to all of them was that when you added all of that up together, the density of that development on the property was less than half, or no greater than half of the land. In other words, half the land was left as is.
Yeah, they le- they left a lot of buffers between A-
A lot of buffers.
A, A-herne Park.
It was kind of like, we need to hide this, there's got to be fifty, you know, yards' worth of trees, or something.
Right.
So you can't see it, uh, you know, that sort of thing.
Near to center, the trees.
And, uh, I, uh, and again, I think that's, I suspect that that's a, uh, a prejudice, whatever the right word is, on the part of the consultant, as opposed to a direction coming from the commission that ordered the study. And, you know, I'll, I'll say it, because it's, you know, my own personal opinion, nothing more, at this point in time, but I, I think that, uh, that they're looking at this property, that they being the consultants, as an island. And as opposed to a continuation of the city of Laconia, or however you want to. They're not looking at it as part of Laconia. not looking at it as part of Laconia, or a continuation of logical development in Laconia, or anything like that, so much as they're looking at it as it's an island, and we get to design what this island is going to look like onto itself. And I think, taking that viewpoint, you come up with different, a different way of looking things that, that I was using as an example to the, to make my point when I was discussing it with Scott earlier today, that Scott, I guess I shouldn't, can I say where you live? Scott lives on Holman Street. And I said, you know, if you can imagine that there was a 200-acre piece of land between Holman Street and Winisquam Avenue that was completely, between Lake Winisquam and Holman Street, that was completely undeveloped, and owned in the same family forever, and is still sitting there today. It's 200 acres right there. And, and, and suddenly, the owners of that 200 acres decided that they're going to sell it for whatever reason, and so they put it up for sale and to any developer that wants to buy that 200 acres and develop it. And so surely somebody would. And, and, you know, so then the question becomes, you know, what would they do with it? Not so much in terms of use, because zoning would largely determine with the use of it, but what would they do with it in terms of density, in terms of, of how the street pattern would be developed and whatnot? And what I, my point is, there's no developer in their right mind that would look at that 200 acres as an island onto itself. You know, they would be, you know, I would bet that it would turn out to look pretty much exactly the way it looks today. Shore Drive would still be Shore Drive, and there'd be housing lots lined up along the street and whatnot, because that's the way you can maximize the value for the property under most circumstance. So I don't think the development would look any different than it is today, and nobody's going to drive down Shore Drive and say, well, this is terrible, you know, we certainly don't like this, there's not enough buffer here, or there's not enough whatever, that this is an awful street, and we need to zone out this kind, so nobody ever does this sort of thing again. I just don't think that would happen. Wouldn't, wouldn't happen on my street, it wouldn't happen on any of your streets. And so I, I guess my point there is that there just seems to be this prejudice that if we continue development in Laconia that looks like current attractive development in the city looks, that somehow that's bad, as opposed to there's nothing wrong with my street, most people would drive down my street and say, this is a nice street, you know, by almost any standard. But yet, if you look at it as an island, suddenly it becomes, ugh, you know, somehow, and I, I just don't get that, that, so anyway, that's focusing too much on the residential end of things, I know, but I, it's not like this property is 1,000 miles from the rest of the city of Laconia or anything, it's really fairly centrally located to, to some pretty intense development of itself in terms of Shore Drive and North Main Street, Old North Main Street, and that sort of thing, so, anyway.
If I, if I may, Mayor, I think it, in fairness, we should say, it, it's my experience, the manager may have a different, or others may have a different view, I doubt it. I, I think the commission has played their cards pretty close to their, their vest. I don't think they-
Members have.
Yeah, the commission members. I'm not sure that they're wild about some of the proposals that have been made either, but I think they, they need our support to head in another direction. Getting back to what you said at the beginning, the term I've always heard was the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and we ought to at least squeak as much as we can to get that project headed in a direction that's good for the city, not good for-
Well, let me suggest this. I'll be happy to go some other direction, but let me suggest as a, as a possibility that working with the city manager and the planning director, I could, over the next few weeks, work on the development of a resolution that puts into words the sentiments that I've heard expressed here tonight. We certainly don't have to pass it as is, but we could circulate it to the council then and get reaction to it and whatnot, and with the idea of trying within the next, you know, few weeks, 30 days at the outside, to, to come up with a resolution, if you will, that would express our sentiments that we could all sign on to, and that we could present with unanimity to the commission.
Could I just suggest, I think Dean keeps in fairly close contact with those folks. Could we ask that he check with them and see that if there's anything going to happen suddenly here in the near future before we take weeks to come up with a-
Okay, sure.
I just, I'd hate like hell to get-
Yeah.
Get there a day late.
Well, yeah, we could, yeah, so if you could check on that, to see reasonably how much time we would have to develop an official position.
Councilor Lippman?
I guess in the short run, I'd ask them not to adopt a proposal that's specifically against the direction of our master plan, which is to make our demographic situation more unbalanced and less sustainable, and at least put that out there as an early statement, and come back with something more constructive, but I, I really am concerned about-
All right, so I would, I would suggest, let's do this then. Let's, let's, let's draft a quick letter that we can send to the commission that, that more or less simply makes that point, and say that we're, you know, over the next few weeks, we're going to be developing a more thorough reaction, but that our immediate reaction is what you said there, and that we can get a letter off to them, you know, within a week, that we would all be in agreement with, that, that basically puts them on notice, if you will, in a polite way, that we'd like to officially weigh in on this. But in the meantime, we would, as I said at that meeting that night, please do no harm.
Yes, that's exactly, exactly the sentiment.
So is this, is that a reasonable approach on this?
Yep.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, item 20B, Elm Street and Pleasant Street School Parent Pickup Lines. That is on page 25 of your packet. Who's going to take this?
Start you off here. So following up on a speaker at the podium at our last meeting who indicated traffic in significantly-
Back up all the way to Parade Road.
We, I personally went out there along with Krista Larson of Public Works, and we're at Elm Street School at 2:30 for a pickup day, and we spent an hour there. I think I shared this with most of you in email, and I have photos, but the, there was no more than seven vehicles queuing in the road at the worst-case scenario. We did speak with the principal, we spoke with the crossing guard, we spoke with a couple of parents. There was one day, there was an accident on the first week of school that may have been what the speaker was referring to, but on this particular day, minimal. The principal in particular said that the bottleneck, the little bottleneck there is now, happens only in the afternoon pickup, the morning drop-off is no problem. The police did put some temporary no parking signs down towards the country club a little bit, because some parents, rather than come in and drive through the loop to pick up in the parking lot area, we were kind of parking there and walking over, and that was causing some challenges. So they, principal and staff, have put an immediate stop to that, the temporary parking signs, the police assisted with, with, really seems to have taken care of most of the problem. And again, anytime school starts up in the first week, or even the second week, there's, there's challenges. We also, as was requested, included the Pleasant, Pleasant Street School Administration with our staff, I did not sit in that meeting. We know there's an extra challenge there right now, because we've still got construction going on, that'll be wrapping up the next week or two. So rather than do anything draconian and costly, all sides agreed that what was presented here tonight about some no parking on certain streets from 1 to 4 was a great first step to kind of corral the problem a little bit right now, and then we can assess it going forward, and if either school seems to say that there's still a problem, there are some other long-term solutions that involve some other access points or things that are far more challenging, I won't say far more challenging, but more challenging than just putting up some no parking this side of the street from 1 to 4, which we think is going to eliminate the overwhelming lion's share of the problem. So we have a, a motion that is relatively inexpensive, we've gone by it with the administration of both schools, they're supportive of it, DPW staff's been involved with it, and it's something that we can implement relatively quickly, and start to monitor before we start, you know, taking out sublongs and removing trees, and doing all brand-new turning lanes and those types of things that maybe aren't warranted. So that's a brief background to it. Certainly have staff here who were more involved than I was, if you have any questions, but the motion would be to put these no parking between the 1:00 PM and 4:00 PM timeframes Monday through Friday on a couple of streets there, and, and-
So are you looking for passing this motion tonight?
If you are ready with it, I think that makes sense. We could get signs up and in place, and we can start monitoring it sooner rather than later. And I think with some of the temporary no parking signs that the police worked with the school administrators to put up, right when we first saw the problem there, have kind of addressed it, this would just make it, you know, have a little more backbone to it, because the council approved it, and we would get rid of some of those paper signs, which are a little bit less-
All right, questions or comments, both on the specifics and the general idea of passing this tonight? Councilor Hammel?
Question I have is, I guess by, you know, removing the parking on the main streets, which we should do, the alternative is, are they going to be using some of these side streets to stack the cars now? They are, like on Reagan Way across-
They were, they were doing that right now, so they're doing their-
They are doing that now?
And there's probably five or six cars at most were in there. There was a crosswalk right there, there was a crossing guard there, so if the parents are choosing to go there, you know, that is a little safer, there is not a crossing guard at Pleasant Street School. But again, where some of the cars were queuing up right now on both sides of the street, they were making it so narrow that buses were having a challenge getting through. So we're, we're trying to identify areas where the buses will still be able to traverse the, the streets with ease, not bottleneck it, but yeah, if you put up no parking signs here, they're going to park in an area that doesn't have no parking.
What I was just wondering, has, has there been any phone calls from people on Reagan Way, that if they're blocking the driveway or anything like that?
We haven't, and then again, it's a public street, so on-street parking would be allowed unless you sign it, but unless you start posting everything all around there, then there are people who are always going to find a way. So we think this is a good practical approach, has support from the school administration, and we can implement it fairly quickly.
Anyone else? All right, I will read the motion then. We need a, a motion would be in order to make the following areas of Lakeport no parking between 1:00 PM and 4:00 PM on Monday through Friday. One, no parking on the odd-numbered side of Elm Street, from Jefferson Street to the north boundary of 493 Elm Street. Two, no parking on the even-numbered side of Elm Street side-
Side, yes.
Sorry. On the even-numbered side of Elm Street, from Jefferson Street to the intersection of Hickory Stick Lane. Three, no parking between, is that word, superfluous there, between? No more, no parking on the odd-numbered side of Pleasant Street from the intersection of, oh, we're switched locations here now, okay.
We got both Elm Street School and Pleasant Street School in here.
No parking on the odd-numbered side of Pleasant Street, from the intersection of Tremont Street to the north boundary of 387 Pleasant Street. No parking on the even-numbered side of Pleasant Street, from the southern boundary of 397 Pleasant Street to the intersection with the northern entrance into the Pleasant Street School. No parking between, oh, what's that word? No parking on the odd-numbered side of Folsom Street, from the intersection of North Main to the intersection of Pleasant Street. No parking on the even-numbered side of Folsom Street, from the intersection of North Main Street to the intersection of Pleasant Street. Okay, someone care to make that motion? Councilor Haynes, is there a second? Councilor Cheney?
Yes, I apologize.
Second, second.
I was waiting for Henry to-
All right, discussion?
I just have one comment, and that, I, I think the manager's already mentioned it, but signage is critical in this. I was a cop for 25 years, you can arrest people for murder, and they don't put up half as much of a stink as they do if you give them a parking ticket, or tell them they got to move when there's no sign there. So signage would be critical.
Signage, but not clutter.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll do it appropriately, so the point is made.
Further discussion? All's in favor of making, of adopting this motion on no parking around Elm Street School and Pleasant Street School? Please raise a hand. Four votes, the affirmative, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Signs will be up tomorrow, right? Okay, item 20C, request from the Wild Trail Organization for a fun, for a run-walk fundraising event on city park property. And why is this-
It's the value of the money.
-under new business as opposed to-
Because of the dollar threshold for the fundraising is greater than $2,000, and that's where you did not want it on the consent calendar, you wanted it as a standalone agenda item.
Thank you for that valuable piece of information. I knew there had to be a really good reason. All right, so they're going to raise more than $2,000, and that's the reason we're voting on this, as opposed to having it on the consent calendar. So any questions about this? This is an annual event, held in conjunction every year with the Pumpkin Festival. If not, a motion would be in order to approve the request from the Wild Trail Organization for a run-walk fundraising event on city property to be held on October 13, 2018. Motion made by Councilor Hammel, seconded by Councilor Haynes, any discussion? All is in favor, please raise a hand. Four votes, the affirmative, the motion carries unanimously. All right, then we've got these three, before we get to the fun part, sewer ordinance, we have these three police resolutions to pass, and we only need, do we need a wave reading?
No, the second reading, and you've already had the public hearing tonight, so you're good just to approve as is.
All right. Page 34, Resolution Number 31. Motion be in order to approve Resolution 31 relative to authorizing city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $13,694.51 for DWI/DUI patrols. Motion is made by Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Lippman, any discussion? All is in favor, please raise a hand. Four votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Next, on to Resolution 32, relative to authorizing city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $6,194.35 for distracted driving enforcement patrols. Councilor Hammel makes that motion, Councilor Haynes seconds the motion, any discussion? All is in favor of adopting Resolution 32, please raise a hand. Four votes, the affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Finally, Resolution 33. Resolution be in order to move to approve Resolution 33 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $11,815.58 for sustained traffic enforcement patrol. Councilor Cheney makes that motion, Councilor Lippman seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Four votes, the affirmative, that motion carries unanimously as well, and that brings us to the last item of- Guess we have no unfinished business tonight, is that right? Oh, I'm sorry, the last item of unfinished business, and that is sanitary sewer rates and expansion, and that memorandum starts on page 40 of your packet. And we have the Director and the Assistant Director of Public Works with us tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. And we're double-teaming you for a little bit tonight, so. There you go, okay.
Is that this?
That's this. So you've got a complete copy in front of you. So we're talking both the sanitary sewer increase and the expansion of the sanitary sewer system tonight. And what we're going to do is talk, first talk about sewer rate study, which really talks about what money we need-
Microphone a little closer.
Which we need to keep the existing system in operation. Then we'll talk a little bit on expanding into developed areas. And that's important because part of the cost, and you'll see as we go through tonight, will be moved over into the sewer rate study. And then our analysis determined that expanding in undeveloped areas is really not gonna impact this rate study. It's not gonna impact the period that the increase or the proposed increase. Will be in effect before we have to do our next rate study. And then we're gonna talk, roll it all up to toss, total possible rate increase. What we're gonna need tonight is an agreement on the rate increase so that we can start preparing the ordinance changes to get ready for coming back to city council. Once you see the ordinance changes, you're gonna have to schedule a public hearing. And then we'll need guidance back from the council whether we're gonna consider expanding into the developed areas. In this case, Woodvale Drive into that sewer rate increase that we're projecting. And again, we're not really talking about expansion into undeveloped areas because it's really a, so far enough out that's not impacting our sewer rate study for tonight. And I'll turn that over to Krista.
Good evening. First, a little history about rate increases and the most recent rate increase was in 2015. Where we had a 12 to 14 percent increase between 2012 and 2015. At this time, the reserve fund was essentially depleted and there were increasing needs for repair and replacement of sewer mains and pump stations. In 2018, the Public Works undertook a rate study to desert, determine how the current rate structure supports normal collection system operation and maintenance expenses. And also how well it supports an increase in our annual capital improvement program. We asked ourselves these questions because first, we're observing a decrease in water sales. A majority of the sanitary sewer fund's revenue is based on water consumption, which has been declining by 1.5 percent annually. We're also seeing an increase in the cost of our annual CIP program in order to meet the demands of our aging infrastructure and rising costs of construction. In addition to the rising costs of construction, we've also seen an increase in our CIP program as a result of our major roadway projects. Replacement and upgrade of the sanitary sewer system has been expedited in order to support the roadway projects. For example, we've replaced approximately half a mile of sewer as part of the Court Street Phase 1 project. And we'll be replacing nearly a mile of sewer as part of the Union Avenue projects. The sewer upgrades are done ahead of the roadway projects to minimize the need to excavate in a brand-new road for our sewer break. Once we get beyond our major roadway projects, we are planning for an increase in our CIP program for lining of our large interceptor pipes. This is needed not only to ensure the structural integrity of those large interceptor pipes, but also to reduce groundwater infiltration. If the city's cost share to the Winnebago River Basin program does, becomes based on flow data. Then eliminating groundwater infiltration will become critical. So some assumptions that were used as part of the rate study, we, in order to anticipate revenue and needs. The assumptions we used were that water sales continued to decrease by 1.5 percent per year. The water sales decrease was observed by our engineering consultant as part of the rate study. And was confirmed by the water department in their own analysis of water sales. Again, water sales directly impact the sewer usage fees as a majority of our users are billed based on water meter data. We also assumed an average inflation of 2 percent per year. That will need to continue to support our annual CIP budget of $1.5 million per year. And that we need to maintain a reserve fund of $3.5 million. The $3.5 million in reserve fund ensures that we have 50 percent of our operating costs available for emergencies. And that we also have a reserve for any emergencies that may arise with the Winnebago River Basin programs' infrastructure. The current average residential bill in Laconia is $379. And is based on an average usage of 105 gallons per day and one sewer unit. A single-family residence is considered a one sewer unit. Commercial users will vary with the number of sewer units based on their business type and number of connections. The proposed rate increase would result in an annual increase of the average residential bill of $40 each year for the next three years. Or 9.5 percent. This includes both the usage fee and the annual fixed fee. This increase would support operation and maintenance and capital improvements for our existing system. Yes?
Is that paying for it all on a cash basis or? I'm just trying to get a sense of whether the study assumes, I guess. Having the current users pay for assets that are gonna last for, you know, a decade or more. And some of the sewer system that we're pulling up is like 50-year life, right? Just in terms of how we're trying to finance that, that component of it. That's just, just like some insight in that because, you know, 9 percent, 9 percent, 9 percent is pretty hefty. And it seems like we're trying to pay for all the, the current development based on the current rate payers and people come in later. Don't share in that.
If I can jump in for that for a second. So, so this is based on a cash basis and part of that is between our, our local infrastructure and the Winnebago River Basin infrastructure. We've got a lot of aging infrastructure, so I think the investment needs to be there. The next component that Krista's gonna get there is also a proposed increase in the hookup fee to the system. Which is where folks getting into it, in essence, are paying for a share of the assets that have already been invested otherwise. And that's a number that I can't even tell you the last time that that was looked at and changed in the city. It's very small right now. So we are trying to look at new people of the system paying for investments that others have made. But trying to, you know, keep current and, and maintain the infrastructure for the reasons that Krista just outlined.
This council put that rate in, that fee, probably 10, 11 years ago.
Hookup fee?
Hookup fee, because there never was one, other than water.
And we've reached out to other communities and even with the rate that we proposed here, we are still significantly middle of the road and, and not extreme by any measure to it. But it is a significant increase from where it is today.
What, what was the subject of that last sentence?
It's, we compared what other communities charge for the hookup fee and we're in, in the middle of the mix of the hookup fee. So.
You're not talking about rates?
No, it's a large increase from where the hookup fee is today to where we're proposing, but it's very reasonable when you look at what peer communities are doing. And it's for that reason they're buying into the investment made into the infrastructure.
So I think this slide addresses what, what we're saying here too as well. So the sewer rate study also looked at our sewer connection permit fee compared to similarly sized communities. The sewer connection permit fee is intended to cover the cost of service such as administrative costs, inspection services for sewer hookup. And engineering review if necessary. The proposed sewer connection permit fee is $330. In addition, the study recommended to implement a sewer system development charge, which is essentially the buy-in fee. To the value of the infrastructure for new users. So this would be charged, as I said, to new users on an existing system and the proposed fee for this is $800. This was compared to similarly sized communities and is in line and in the middle of what other communities are charging. So the total amount, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing that microphone tonight. It's not your fault, it's been universal. So I, I'm not, I don't understand the difference between the sewer connection fee and the new user fee.
Okay, so, right, so now if you're going to replace your sewer service or, you know, do some work on your existing service. You come in and you get a sewer connection permit and you pay a fee. And we're proposing that that fee be $330. That covers our inspector going out and.
What is it now?
$75.
But at a $75 fee, we're not even covering staff and review time right now for what's truly going out there and going into it.
So give me a practical example again of who's doing that? In my case, what would, I'm a sewer customer, so what would I be doing to, to currently incur that $75 fee?
Nothing, not unless you were doing any type of a replacement of a hookup from your house to the system in the street. And we needed to review your site work and come out and inspect it and review your engineered plan on it. You wouldn't pay anything. You've paid it, somebody paid it when they hooked you up into the system and you don't pay that at all going forward. Unless you're doing an alteration, changing your hookup, replacing it, or doing a new hookup. That's the only time it would come in.
All right, so who's paying, who's currently paying the $75 fee?
I could give you an example. There was a resident as part of the Court Street project that was, had, had a failed line. The roots had grown in to the sewer service. So this homeowner had to pay the $75 fee in order to relay the line. That pays for the inspector to go out and pays for us to record that new service location in our database.
All right, so then on to part two.
Right. So part two is that system development charge, as I said, and that would be for users, new users. Never been on the system, but it's an existing system, you know, subdivided a lot, put up a new house and is now a new connection into an existing system. And that's the buy-in fee to the value of that infrastructure.
So that fee now is?
$800 is what we're proposing. There's no, currently no fee for that. This would be a new.
For a new customer to hook into the sewer system.
Beyond that $75.
Hookup fee, they're not buying into the infrastructure and the investment that was made right now in a lot of communities.
$75, period, covers everything.
It's kinda like your buy-in to the country club, you know, you've, you.
Initiation fee.
Initiation fee, but you're buying into the infrastructure and all the dollars that have gone in before. And again, we've surveyed neighboring communities and we're certainly not out of line with these fees by any stretch.
The only thing is, you could, you could say you just added $800 for the cost of the house.
But, but you can, but you can also say that by somebody being on a public sewer with much fewer headaches than your own private septic. You've added value to that house because you're on city sewer.
Another way of looking at it, you're subsidize, the existing homeowners are subsidizing the new homeowner.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So another recommendation from the study is to review our procedure for establishing sewer units. Our current process does not take into consideration cost of service. Which can be influenced by factors such as residential versus commercial, meter size and usage. We recommend that this be examined between now and the next rate study, which we anticipate for 2021. So in conclusion, the recommendation is a sewer rate increase of 9.5 percent each year for the next three years. On bills starting on, dated on or before February 1st, 2019. Again, this results in an average increase of $40 per year for three years for the average residential user. Also a recommendation that the sewer permit fee be $330 and a system development charge of $800. Just a reminder that this rate study did not include any consideration for expansion and only focused on the existing system. The rate increase would support the operation and maintenance and CIP for the existing system.
Counselor Hamel has a question.
Sorry about that.
Counselor Hamel has a question here?
Yes, sir.
What's in, excuse me, what's in our. Sanitary sewer fund now that you wanna have at 3.5 million? Do you know what we have?
We took some. Excuse me, one-time money for the Court Street project, so we're at about $5 million now. But we do anticipating needing additional funding for the Union Ave projects. So this brought us down to about the $3.5, $3.5 million levels what we anticipate to be at.
Okay. I, I think the 9.5 miles, we call it 10 percent almost yearly for three years is a little steep. And. I'd like to see it eased in more gradually. You know, the, the $20 the first year would be okay. And then maybe do a 10 and a 10 for the following few years to bring it up to that $40. Instead of doing it, you know, $40 all at once. Because, you know, you, you're looking to increase your capital CPI money from $400,000 a year is what you got here to 1.5 billion. So if you did it, if we did it like half, you know, to begin with, you'd, you'd increase it to 800,000, which is doubling it. The other way, you're tripling it. So I think adding it more gradually would be in better taste. The other, you know, the, the fees for the connection and, and that there, I, I don't have a problem with. But I just think it would be better to try and implement it more slowly, maybe over a couple of years. And because then you're gonna relook at it again in '21, you said?
Yes, sir.
So, and I'm sure there'll be an increase there also. So I, I think bringing it in a little more slowly might be a little bit better.
Yes, sir.
Well, I guess. Counselor Lippman?
I guess I'd like. To see like what's it look like over the next decade because. If, and I agree with Counselor Hamel about trying to, to take some of the edge at nearly 10 percent off a year. But if we're just postponing something that's even gonna be larger subsequently, I wanna know about that before we make a decision. About the next, so I don't wanna do nine and a half, nine and a half, nine and a half and only to find out we're gonna be 15, 15 and 15. Because we went at maybe seven, seven and seven, you know? I guess the reality is we do have an aging system.
If I can respond to Counselor Hamel, the request is to do that $40 each year for three years. So we can't go 20, 10 and 10 because we really wanna go 40, 40 and 40. It's not just a $40 increase one time over three years. It's $40 year one, 40 year.
They want $120 a year or more.
So if we only did 20, 10 and 10, we're only a third of the way of where we need to be. And we look at the next rate study, the Counselor Lippman's point, in, in 2021. We haven't even hit what we're identifying right now to get that increase to be cumulatively $120 over three years.
So my, my question to you would be. If, 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 if the politics of this weren't an issue. Would, would, do we need the 120 right now?
Yes.
So you, so they're saying they need, they need a 30 percent increase right now ideally, right?
And again, I think part of this was driven by some of the large, major projects that we're doing that maybe wouldn't have come quite as quickly. But since we're making the investment, we wanna address that now in conjunction with it. Is really, when you think of the, the major areas we're doing, you know, we did sewer work on Pleasant Street. We're doing it all in, all of Court Street. We're doing it on Union Ave, not only from Lakeport Square to Stark. But it's gonna be on the section from, you know, down here at Main Street to Guilford Ave. And then, and I recall when I started with you all back in 2011, we hadn't collected, we, the city, hadn't looked at sewer rates in a long time. And I got here and we started looking and we were burning through our cash reserve. And several of you were on the council then and said, we need to have the political wherewithal to do those. And that's where you had those three rate increases that you voted at one time to kind of take the politics out of it in future years of somebody not funding what was a needed recommendation. So we did that step, we had a little break, and now we're back to say that, you know, we need to be looking at this, and again, the real part of it was Union Ave and Court Street, driving and even Pleasant Street, we did a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of sewer work in there, so we've replaced it under some major corridors, which is the right thing to do if it was needed.
What's a quarterly income to the sewer department from the rates, do you know?
I'd have to check that.
I'd have to double check, but, because it depends upon what cycle, it's around two hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred, but I'd have to double check.
Per quarter?
Correct.
A million dollars.
I guess I'd like to, I'd like to study how we finance this. It seems to me that we do have a bullet to bite here, but I guess the issue is how we fold in the increase as direct rates today versus phasing in over a longer time if we were to use some debt to 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 finance some of the infrastructure improvements.
Part of the problem that I see is what we're seeing for the next, I'll say, three or four years, one point five million every year. So if you add that up, we'll be a five million dollar bond at some point.
Right.
So the question really is, and that's something we're tossing around, is how much do we bond and keep paying bonds? What is our bonding limit that we want to manage to?
We have a lot of borrowing capacity in on our according to our audit report, okay, and I guess the issue is, you know, something that's going to last fifty years, if we if it's got a financial pattern of this and then it goes like that, we're just putting too much on the front end and not spreading it out over the life of the the project, if you will, and so, you know, I don't, I think you're right to bring forward the issues, I think we have agreement that, you know, it shouldn't be basically free to get onto the system. I think the issue is how we manage this bolus of prudent infrastructure investment while we're tearing up the street, there's no it's a poor use of dollars to tear up the street again just because we didn't do the right thing when we were, we tried to do everything the right way to begin with. And, you know, we're trying to build streets so that they're, you know, we're just not paving and paving, if you will.
So maybe we can offer up a hybrid and knowing that, you know, this council's all going to be here next year as well, that maybe if we talk about your commitment to look at what we're going to do in years two and three, but maybe we can move ahead on a year one increase now on a cash basis, and we can study what the impact is of a blended rate in the borrowing and put some dollar amounts to that and bring it back to you sometime after the first of the year, so that way we at least got a Band-Aid in place and we're getting it in in you know, implemented sooner rather than later to start getting it, then we can bring you some approaches on how we can bond a portion of it and what that looks like going forward.
A twenty dollar Band-Aid effective in February one?
I would say, get, let's get the first year in, so I would say do the forty for year one, and we'll bring you back, and we'll bring you back some options on a combination of debt finance and cash, and maybe instead of it being forty in year two and three, you know, part of it's in cash, but part of it's debt service, so maybe we're only coming back to you and saying it's twenty-five dollars in year two gets you the same buying power because we can present a portion of it. But the but the reason when we picked the February first date is because if you were to bring this to a first reading and a public hearing and a vote, realistically, if we went in with a new rate effective for consumption on November first, their quarterly bill, so November, December, January usage, the February bill would really be the first time we would be collecting based on the new rates. It wouldn't be fair to put in a new rate and say, oh, that was for the three months that you just consumed, that that doesn't really pass the the test. So maybe we can kind of split it and work through that model, but not kick the can down the road in the meantime.
We'll go here and then back to Henry.
Yeah, I I don't have a problem with the first rate, but maybe you could come back with proposal or whatever you want to call it of, if we have to borrow one point five million, what would be the increase in the rate to pay the interest and principal on that bond? You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yep, exactly.
That would be part of the rate, maybe it wouldn't be the forty dollars, it might be ten or fifteen, who knows? It depends, you know, what interest rate and all that there, but we could calculate it towards the increase in the rate on the borrowing of the one point five of that, whatever you need for that capital for that year.
Exactly, that's, that's what we can do.
Okay.
I think the manager's got our message, and I think that, you know, forty dollar initially, if you look at it as ten dollars a quarter, which is divided by three dollars and something cents a month, that that would get us at least to a point where we can consider a longer range plan.
Counselor Haynes.
So Scott, as we move forward with the road program next year, we're going to know what the impact is as far as the sewer updates and the whole works?
Yes, on the on the significant reconstructions like we're doing in the major quarters, yes, that's that it's factored into this.
I think that's one of the, I think that's one of the.
We can break that down for you, what it's going to be and.
I think that's one of the things that people don't understand is, Court Street's a perfect example.
Sure.
Thank you.
So now we're talking about, it seems like we have a developing consensus here to to go ahead and do the forty dollars effective February.
So what we could do is bring that forward to a, you know, an ordinance, a first reading, refer to a public hearing, that would happen at the first meeting in October, vote on the second meeting in October, and then that rate would go in if it was passed on November first usage, which means it would reflect in the first bill three months later.
But none of this has anything to do with Woodvale?
No, not that component, so we're trying to break into two pieces, this is what's needed for what we've got as is right now. And now I think we'll, if there's consensus on that, what we'd like to do is show you how Woodvale may impact into that if we expand it into an existing neighborhood.
I think similarly, though, and I'm not trying to cut the Woodvale discussion short, is again, paying for it in three years versus over a longer period is, I think, a worthwhile way to look at this.
You'll you'll see, that's our plan for that for Woodvale.
Okay. All right, does everyone agree we have a consensus that they can put on our agenda next time a forty dollar one-time increase at this point in time in the sewer fee effective February of next year?
Effective November one usage, which would not be reflected until the February billing.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So as we mentioned, the second part of this presentation is about expansion into developed areas. So Woodvale Drive area is a good representative example of a near-term candidate for sewer expansion due to, and was selected due to its proximity to a water body and the density of homes in the area. There are fifty-one lots in the project area, includes Rolling Lane, High Notch Circle and Woodvale Drive and a handful of lots on Endicott Street East. So based on council feedback, we looked at a couple of different funding scenarios for the project. The estimated construction cost is one point four million dollars. The cost per lot for the full construction cost would be about twenty-seven thousand dollars per lot. This does not include the cost to connect to the sewer system, which averages about four thousand dollars, but does vary significantly based on terrain and depth and length of service. The funding scenarios presented are based on a twenty-year bond at an interest rate of two percent. Historically, ratepayers have funded fifty percent of the construction costs and the remaining fifty percent paid by special assessment to the abutting properties. So strictly for the cost of construction, not including the cost to connect, for a twenty-year bond, the estimated cost to the abutters is seven hundred dollars per year for twenty years, and the cost to the ratepayers is three dollars and fifty-seven cents per sewer unit per year for twenty years. If council decides to continue the process of expanding the sewer system into the Woodvale Drive area, public staff, public work staff will contact the abutters regarding their costs based on the selected funding scenario and determine if there are sufficient number of abutters that are interested in the project. Historically, two-thirds of abutters had petition for sewer installation. For developed areas in general.
Excuse me a second, Counselor Lutman, have a question.
Just the two percent assumption seems pretty aggressive based on our ten-year rates were just about three percent recently.
We can rework that, but there also might be some EPA groundwater type of grants that are available for this type of purpose of expansion and protection, so we'll look at the scenarios.
Sure.
For developed areas in general, staff recommends that sewer expansion be funded with the fifty-fifty split between the abutters and ratepayers, and that two-thirds majority of abutter support is sufficient to go forward with an expansion project. We are looking for council guidance on this.
So as Krista said, we're looking for guidance on whether you think what you're really probably looking at is the dollar impact, which is that projected three dollar and fifty cent a year based on a twenty-year bond on a one point four million dollar project, half of it being the city's share, so that's the impact to each ratepayer for each sewer hookup, is what they're paying to expand the system to pick up these fifty-one lots in the Woodvale area. Each person in the Woodvale area would be paying under the proposed scenario, seven hundred dollars a year times twenty years. They'll be paying fourteen thousand dollars a person over twenty years to be hooking up and to be getting the right to be on the city sanitary sewer system. So I think Krista's point of if there's consensus on the dollars, we want to reach out to the neighborhood to see if there's support for this, because it is a requirement in state law that if we expand the system, people need to hook, required to hook into it within a very short period of time. So we can work through a betterment process, which we've done in the city, and let them add this out as a, an addition, if you will, to their property tax bill over the twenty years to ease the expense of it. But it's certainly, I don't think, something we want to force upon people if there's not a actual problem there today.
So you want a super majority to commit for everybody.
That doesn't have to be, but we feel that two-thirds of them saying, yes, we understand the value, we understand the cost and how we can spread it over twenty years. I think as a city, we'd want to make sure that the majority of the people wanted it versus we're doing it and and people are unhappy about it.
But you're advocating a super majority.
The council could set that, but we're recommending that it's it's more than fifty-one percent, so whether it's sixty percent or sixty-five or sixty-seven, we think it should be a larger threshold.
Counselor Hamel.
Can they elect it not to hook up?
No, I think on this one, under state law, if we're within, if we're within it, somebody feed, they need to hook up, and it's a relatively short time period too, it's.
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days.
Okay, now also, it says total impact on ratepayers, Woodvale Expansion fifty-fifty, said the average bill in two thousand twenty-one would be five hundred and two dollars. So the average now is three seventy-nine, correct?
Right.
Okay, now that five oh two, does that take in the forty dollar increase?
Yes, so.
Or is that in addition to this five oh two?
No, if you're if you move ahead to slide sixteen, which I think Councilmember Hamel's referring to, which is where we looked at the total impact with a rate increase and, you know, consideration of our earlier conversation, but, you know, what we were proposing was an average forty dollar increase for three years. Obviously, looking at that again, that would bring your bill from three seventy-nine to four ninety-eight. The three dollars and fifty cents would be on top of that and would bring the average residential bill to five hundred and two dollars.
So that factors in everything as we presented it tonight. We know we're only taking the first step and we're looking at some other options, but that's kind of your worst-case scenario, three years at an average of forty, and the impact of three three dollars and fifty cents a year per residential user for the impact of the Woodvale.
This would cost me on Dartmouth Street, three dollars and fifty-seven cents a year.
Yes, each year for twenty years for, in order for us to expand the system and get those hooked up, which adds to water quality and protection and those types of things.
Counselor Lutman.
So I think the numbers you ran there make the case for what I was trying to get at earlier. To to provide one and a half million dollars, we use one point four million, we use one point four million dollars to to support that, we need three dollars and fifty-seven cents from each ratepayer if we do it over twenty years as opposed to forty dollars in one year, or forty dollars three years in a row. I'm just saying if we needed, we're talking about three fifty-seven times three as a rate increase, which makes it easier to support doing other projects when you've paid forty, forty and forty, and then you're adding more on top of it. I think that's becomes, you know, as much as I want to help out my neighbor, it's getting expensive.
I understand, I understand.
So I think the other thing too on this is I would look at.
So if you if you, I'm just asking you a math question.
Sure.
If you borrow, so if you borrowed the one point five.
The 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 numbers they ran with one point four, okay, if they borrowed one point four.
How many, how many years' worth of rate increases is that paying for?
So that you're basically saying you need three dollars and fifty-seven cents over a twenty-year period.
I'm, I'm, you know, I'm talking about the other, the the rate, not the Woodvale project.
I'm I'm using by, it's just coincidental that the the cost of the next three years of extensive road projects, they need about one and a half million a year. Call it one point four, just to make the, illustrate the example better, okay? For three dollars and fifty-seven cents, we could, per year, per household, we could accomplish what they need for sewer improvements.
Instead of putting in the rate.
Instead of putting forty dollars on the rate, we would need three dollars and fifty-seven cents for the first one point four million. We'd need another three dollars and fifty-seven cents to support the second one point four million, and we need another three dollars and fifty seven cents to support the third one point five million, so, but I'm saying, if you if you finance these projects over a twenty-year life, and you could finance these legitimately, I think, under a twenty-five-year life, because.
These pipes have been in a hundred years.
Yeah, so I'm just saying that that your your total cumulative cost of the, forget Woodvale for a second, of the rest of our infrastructure that we need is, you're really talking about the impact of, you know, something closer to ten dollars as opposed to something closer to a hundred and twenty dollars.
I think actually you have to double the three fifty because, right, because the the one point four was half being paid for by residents and half of the city, and also, I don't think, I think, I agree with you, we're going to have to get a higher interest rate if we're just talking about routine sewer maintenance to it, so I think.
But I'm just saying, instead of being a hundred and twenty dollars, we could maybe get this to thirty or sixty, I mean, that's better than a hundred and twenty. And I don't think it's violating any good financial principle to try to match your your debt service to the life of your project, and, you know, here we got something that could last fifty to a hundred years, and we're only borrowing.
Would you do the same thing for the next project and the next project and the next project?
For the first three projects, so we've got a bump here, right, and then we have the interest of of providing better protection for the whole community with respect to the quality of the water, because we all recognize that the quality of Lake Winnipesaukee and Lake Winnasquam and Lake Opichi has a material impact on the value of everybody's property here, so we're trying to do the right thing for for protecting that. My point is, whether you do it fifty-fifty or some other number, that there's a way to to make this a lot less impactful, if you will, than than a hundred and twenty, and not knowing what's coming after that.
Understood.
Counselor Channing?
Then, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and then whatever that fee would be could be related to the magnitude of the project that's going to happen.
And I think also too that rather than having to be fifty-fifty, which is expensive for the homeowner, the individual homeowner, maybe we could look at something more attractive like seventy-thirty, because people would be willing to, we're not putting so much upon the current ratepayers to pay for these, so they'd be willing to provide a better incentive for people to hook up.
And and we showed you the seventy-thirty on page thirteen, so you can see what those numbers look like.
Yeah, it would cost, it would cost me on Dartmouth Street another dollar forty-three a year. You know, seventy-thirty.
For twenty years.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the twenty years.
A lot of us aren't, exactly.
I'm still hoping to worry.
Could I just ask, is the eight hundred dollar new development fee and the three thirty connection permit fee included in the Woodvale, in other words, do the Woodvale folks have to cough up that? In other words, do the Woodville folks have to cough up that 1,130 bucks?
I don't think so, but yes?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Well, I mean, that's another 11.
So, what are you looking for us?
Okay.
Tonight on, as far as Woodville is concerned?
So, for Woodville, a decision on the funding scenario would then allow the DBW staff to go out and contact the abutters and find out what kind of interest is there. You know, I think we need to present to them what their costs may be. So, we are looking for some guidance on that.
So, let's ask around the table if there's support for Counselor Lippman's suggestion that we go 70-30, 70-city, 30 property owner.
I think, I would like to see the financing plan behind that, but I, I think that's, you're going to get more people to take it.
I would support Henry, but I'd like to see the figures.
Anyone object to that?
Are you pressed for time? Not on that one. I mean, we can bring, we can bring you the specifics of that. We'll make sure that we're comfortable with the interest rate that we're looking at for the programs on a bond, you know, whether it's 20 or 25. Maybe we break it down that way a little bit and we'll, we'll give you the numbers. We're not as pressed for that one. But, if we can bring you the year one $40 to get that moving, we can bring you the Woodville separately about whether or not you're in agreement of a funding scenario that we can then reach out to the abutters and say, "Based on these numbers, are you interested?" And then, in the meantime, probably January, February timeframe, we'll bring you some scenarios on future increases, doing some of the bonding approach with it. So, it'll be three separate pieces to it.
Consensus?
I agree.
Counselor Hamel's thinking harder.
Yeah, I don't know about the 70-30 thing.
Well, let's bring you the numbers and.
Bring the numbers, yeah.
You're thinking 50-50?
Yeah.
We'll run them at 50-50 and 70-30 and you can vote on one. And then, we can clean up a letter and mail it out to the abutters based on where the council comes down.
But, we can do that approval for them to.
For the $40?
Do a proposal for those people, right?
Well, we want to get the funding mechanism so we can send it to them and say, "This is what the city is willing to participate, the level at, and then what they would be expected to participate." So, we can give them accurate numbers. I don't think we want to mail out a letter saying, "Are you interested?", but we don't have the numbers behind it.
That'd be the second letter.
Well, we're trying to save on postage too. So, Krista, does that give you what you need on those three pieces?
Yes.
Are we all set on this?
That gives us what we need and we'll get back to you in October with the one rate increase and do the other two pieces.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeter being here so late.
Yeah.
Speaking of which, we have eight minutes to wrap things up here. Let's do it. So, we are to council comments. Council comments, Counselor Hamel?
Real quick, I attended the Conia Senior Center Tuesday. It was Senior Center Week Open House. And they probably had close to 100 people there for the dinner, which was very good.
Were you the oldest one there?
No, I wasn't the oldest one there, thank God. But, they also, we also packed 230 meals to go out on the road. So, it was a busy day there. And Tom, who is the director, manard of the Senior Center, does a really excellent job there with his staff. And the monies that we put aside for the special budgets in our budget book, the monies that we send here for that, for the senior centers, well-used.
Great, thank you for attending that. Anyone else, council comments? Okay, so, our next meeting is on Tuesday, October 9th.
We got us normal workshop meeting.
Oh, we have a special meeting next week at the normal time. And then, the next regular meeting will be on the 9th, Tuesday at 7:00. There's no other business to come before the Mounts Council tonight. I will declare the meeting adjourned at 9:53 PM.
Is that meeting going to be here?
October 1st?
October 1st.
Yep.